And we are recording. Okay, welcome to the town of New Canaan Town Council regular meeting for Tuesday, March 16, 2021. It is seven o'clock and this is a virtual meeting. The meeting ID as published in the paper is 9251671532. The meeting is being recorded and simulcast on channel 79. We'll begin with the agenda. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Boy Scout troop number 45. Steve Prosser, are you ready?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Chairman.
All right.
My name is Aiden Proster and I'm the Assistant Patrol Leader at Troop 45 at St. Alwicha. Thank you for inviting us to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's Town Council meeting. Please stand as we begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, to the nation, our God, to the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody can take your seats. If the Boy Scouts have anything more they'd like to add, we'd love to hear it.
Chairman Engel, thank you very much again for the invitation. As some of you may know, Troop 45 for many years was active at St. Ace. It's been dormant since the 1980s and was restarted earlier in 2020. We're happy to be back, really grateful that you invited us to be here tonight. And we look forward to seeing all of you out in our community over the coming years. So again, thank you very much. And on behalf of Troop 45, again, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, troop.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That is so good to hear that something once dormant has been resurrected during the time of COVID. I think that's really great. With that, we'll move to the roll court, roll call. Vice Chairman Townsend, would you like to lead the roll?
Certainly. Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
Mark Jimsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mike Morrow. Mike Morrow.
I heard him say here.
Okay. Maria Naughton.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Rich Townsend, here. Penny Young. Yes, sir.
I see her, but her mic is off.
Oh, okay. Got her. Okay. Mr. Chairman, all the President accounted for, all the President accounted for, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Then the meeting is called to order. The second order of business is the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the February 24 regular meeting?
As soon as you change, yeah, you got to change Lou Ananziato's name. He's L O U I S.
No. Yeah, I guess it is.
Oh.
Is it?
You spell it L W.
I thought it was.
The way they spell it is obituary.
L E W I S.
Okay, we'll, we'll adjust if necessary.
L E W is, L E W is his nickname.
Okay, okay. We'll adjust. Any other comments on the minutes? Okay, there being none, the minutes are approved. As amended. Next, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address and comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Do I have anybody who wishes to address the council? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the Town Council overview of the budget. Before I do that, Steve Carl, did you want us to add an item to the agenda regarding the ordinance?
Yeah, the way the Charter reads is the, the meeting we had at 6:30 is a public hearing. And the actual vote on the ordinance has to be done at the regular meeting. So on our agendas, item number seven is to discuss the, the final proposed ordinance and there should be a vote attached to that during the regular meeting.
Okay, so we will add a vote to purport, propose ordinance on our current agenda. Okay, got it. It says discussion and vote. Okay, so we'll do that later.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, budget overview. Review and discussion of the proposed town budget for fiscal year 2022, including a review of the following budgets and line items. We'll, we've, tonight, we've got the Board of Education followed by the police, followed by fire, but we can begin with an introduction by Linda, if you're ready.
George, and I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to do a brief budget overview, kind of show the process and where we are and what the numbers look like, and then we'll toss it to the next.
Okay. You're the co-host, if you want to share your screen.
Can you see?
I can see only your file list.
All right, let's start over.
Oh, it's it.
Now you can see it?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I'm going to give a brief overview of the, of the budget, where we are, the process, and then entertain any questions and move it, and move it forward. So I'll talk about the process. There's some trend information that I want to share just to provide some context. I'll talk about the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget. The summary of changes that the Board of Select, the Board of Finance made to the Board of Selectmen budget. And then kind of do a brief overview of the Board of Finance recommended budget that you have together with the grant list and the mill rate. And then just kind of briefly overview where we are with the capital budget. So the process, as you know, began in November, December, you know, the departments begin. Now, the Board of Finance provides initial guidance, departments work on formulating their budgets. In January, we get a grant list certification from the assessor, which is a critical piece of the budget process and we update. This is a non-reval year and so it's, the variation between the grand list is not as significant as when we do have a revaluation. So in January, with all that information, we package that together, the first selectman meets with individual departments to go over their individual budgets. So we make tweaks and adjustments just to get a better understanding of where those requests are and where they fit in within the guidance of the Board of Finance. Later in that month, the Board of Selectmen begins their budget reviews. They meet individually with departments to go over the line items. And they approve a budget that they pass on to the Board of Finance. This year, and I'll talk about this as well, in passing the budget to the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen provided some recommendations of things that the Board of Finance should review in, in approving that Board of Finance budget. After the Board of Finance concludes their process, it comes over to the Town Council beginning today. You do have a public hearing that's going to take place. We've already published the first notice. The second notice will be published next week and then it will come back to you and then you go through your process. And you will make a decision to approve, reject, or make some modifications to the budget. Back to the Board of Finance, in April, the Board of Finance will set the mill rate together with the final adjustments of what the fund balance usage will be for the budget. And then in May, you will approve bond resolutions for capital projects that are approved for bonding. The bond resolution is what gives us the authority to go out and bond for this project. So in a nutshell, this is kind of what the process is like. So historically, we've looked at the budget and we will again this year, just in terms of the general fund. The budget is more than the, than just the general fund. The general fund is by far the biggest component. But we also have capital budgets. We have special revenue funds that we talk about, extra duty funds and so forth. And the Board of Ed also has similar non-general fund items in their budget. And therefore, what we do each year, when the audit is being prepared, we view the entire town, what we call the government-wide statements of governmental activities. So these include your general fund operating expenses, but with capital projects as well, the bonded projects, because those are significant. And therefore, what you have here is just historical trends, the past five years of actual spend government-wide. General fund, including the bonded projects. So you can see, I'll start at the top on the revenue. By far, the biggest revenue source is property taxes. So I show you the five-year tax revenues. And then in the far right column, I have the, the cumulative growth, growth rate over the five-year period. So you can see that in the five-year, our actual tax revenues have grown 1.42% annually. That means if we were to have flat annual growth, it would go 1.42% each year compounded from 2016 to get to where we are in 2020. And likewise, at the bottom, you see the expenditures again. In looking at these, so for example, when you're looking at education expenditures, it's beyond the general fund. It includes the non-general fund expenses. It also includes capital projects that are considered Board of Ed capital. And likewise, under Public Safety or Public Works, not only does it include operational budget, but also those capital projects that fall under capital, that fall under public works. So this is just the townwide view of our operation, and you can see the, the year growth. At the very bottom is the governmental fund balance, that's the general fund, including all the other funds. And you can see that in the past five years, that's grown about 4.3%. Again, a big chunk of that general fund, of that fund balance is the general fund. So this next slide, and I apologize, it's a little bit, there's a lot of detail on it, so it's rather tiny. But this looks at the way that we typically look at the budget. This is just, just looking at the general fund. And again, it's looking at the general fund throughout the five years of, of actual historical information. And so we group these on the town side. You have the Board of Ed Operations, Board of Ed Internal Service. And then you have some other items that the town pays on behalf of the Board of Ed. You have your tax-funded capital. You have your debt service at the library and so forth. So just looking at the general fund, you can see that the total general fund growth back in FY16, actual expenses were a little over 142 million. In fiscal year 20, actual expenses were a little over 147.8. And therefore, in the five-year period, the actual growth year-over-year cumulative is 0.8% on the expenditure side. And so you have that for each of those, for each of those categories and each of those items. But, but this just provides some context. I know you typically get comments and emails regarding the rate of growth, the spending growth, but this kind of shows you that cumulative growth. When you look at it in this fashion, the budget growth is not as, as dramatic as if you just take the first year and the fifth year and you look at that growth, so compounded. It's slightly keeping, it's actually keeping up with, with the rate of inflation if you look at the actual, actual growth expenses. So as I mentioned, as, as part of the budget process, I'll go through the numbers that the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen approved. But as I mentioned earlier, after the Board of Selectmen approved their budget, they, they highlighted five items that they wanted the Board of Finance to review in looking at the budget that was passed over to them. So they wanted them to look at the Board of Ed Internal Service Fund. They wanted them to also look, there were two items on the Board of Ed Internal Service that they wanted the Board of Finance to review and have discussions with the Board of Ed. We've had discussions about COVID expenses. This is our second year of budgeting during COVID and we have some COVID expenses in the prior year. So the Board of Selectmen sent over to the Board of Finance that they should also look at that and see how those, how those expenses can be met. This year, there was also an extensive review of non-general funds. We've talked about this before. And to see, you know, we have police extra duty, you have the pool fund, you have the movie theater fund. And all of these funds have balances. And so one of the things that the Board of Selectmen wanted the Board of Finance to do was to review these funds and analyze them and see which of these funds could potentially be swept so that they are deposited into the general fund to provide some additional revenue and provide some relief on the taxes. So that was one thing. And then they also asked the Board of Finance to look at the budgeted collection rate. As you know, for the last couple of years, we've been budgeting 98 and a half percent collection rate. Historically, we've come in around 99.4, 99.5, depending on the year. So they did ask the Board of Finance to also review the collection rate and see if that was something that could be tweaked. Because adjusting that also has an impact on how much, what the mill rate is and how much you raise from taxation. So with that, the Board of Finance heard from departments and they did approve a budget that's been passed on to you. And they reduced the Board of Selectmen budget by 3.1 million. And so what I have here are the line items that, that were changed. There were some items were, some items decreased, some items increased. And as we go through the budget in meeting with each department, we will go through these individual items. I believe we're going to be discussing with the Board of Education today, so we'll dig down into that Board of Ed number. And likewise, if some of these other departments come across, you'll have an opportunity to kind of have those discussions. But this is essentially the changes that were made to the Board of Fight, to the Board of Selectmen budget to get to where, to get to where they were. And this slide here shows what those numbers are. So in total, the Board of Selectmen approved a budget of 157.6 million. These are the, these are the changes that were made and I've itemized them across the individual units that were impacted by that change. So you see by far, Board of Ed is that 3.1 million number. There were some additions on the town side with staffing, reducing part-time positions, adding full-time positions. There were also some adjustments to the tax-supported capital that you'll see there. There were some projects that were added. They're also decided to use some of the extra duty funds from the police department to fund some police capital. So they were able to reduce that overall budget. And so the gray side of this sheet is the final budget that was approved by the Board of Finance that you are now reviewing. It is a total of 154.5 million. It's about 742,000, sorry, 742,000 more than the revised budget from last year, which is about a 0.48% increase. As far as how do you fund for this budget, you can see that the taxable grant list this year grew just under 1%. We went from 7.7 billion to a little over 7.8 billion. Our non-tax revenues went slightly up from 8.7 million the year before to 9 million. You also see the here that there was a variance between the revenues approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance. Part of that has to do with, in the Board of Finance budget approval, they transferred about 700,000 from the extra duty fund into the general fund. So that provides some additional relief on, on taxes and the use of the fund balance. With the changes that the Board of Finance made, they also reduced the fund balance contribution. The budget that was approved by the Board of Selectmen had 6.8 million. The Board of Finance knocked that down to 5.6 since the budget had, had reduced the considerable amount from what they received from the Board of Selectmen. The collection rate right now remains a 98 and a half percent. They will set that in April when they need to approve the budget. The way that the budget is now, given the grant list and the use of the fund balance, you're looking at 18.143 bill, bill rate, which is a slight reduction from where it was in the current budget year. And the amount to be raised from taxation is slightly reduced as well by almost 800,000 from the prior, from the prior budget. And then finally, just to look at where the capital budget sits. The Board of Selectmen had an initial approval of 27.3 million in capital projects. I categorized these between the Board of Ed, non-Board of Ed and Board of Ed projects. And then at the very bottom, we have the sewer fund. So you can see that on the non-Board of Ed budget, the budget was 20.8 million. The Board of Finance didn't make significant changes to that. They did, however, on the Board of Education side of the budget. And the main change that was made there was, there was an adjustment, if you look at that BOE high school, from 3.8 to 2.3, there was a reduction of one and a half million. That had to do with the, with the estimate for the, for the roof. We had initially, I believe we had four, four and a half or $5 million there and it was knocked down to four, which is what's in the budget, which is in the budget now. And I understand that there were some dip that we'll receive today on that. So they or you may not need adjustments to that as you move forward. The Board of Finance also moved two Board of Ed projects. They didn't change the numbers, but they were moved from the Board of Ed side of the ledger to the town, under town buildings. This is the, there was a CHP project and a boiler, some boilers. And so those were moved into town buildings, similar to what the Board of Finance did last year with, with the CHP project. And with that, that's, that's just a brief overview. You do have the detailed numbers in front of you. And as we visit with each department, we will go into detail as each department comes up. And with that, unless you have any other questions, I don't have any, anymore to add to this.
Linda, thank you. Thank you very much for an excellent, an excellent summary. I, I think this kind of sets the framework for where we're, how the presentations that are going to come to us. I would just make one comment on, on what Linda showed and that, that says, over the last five years, I think there's been a, the the husbanding of money has been done very well to grow expenses down in the order of, of, you know, 1.5%. I think that's, I think that's pretty incredible. And it certainly is on the order of growing it with inflation. And if you, if you take a look at the revenue, it's growing, it's growing at less than the revenue was growing. And property tax is only going up 1.2% per year for the last five years. I would, I would wager to say that is below any measure of income growth within, within the community. So I think, I think this is a pretty responsible history that we go into the budgeting process with. Thank you.
A quick question. Luna asked you this the other day. You gave a good response. I'd share with everybody that how much federal money are we anticipating that we haven't budgeted, expecting to receive because of the new legislation?
Right. So the numbers we've seen from, I believe CCM compiled that based on the allocation, the town-by-town allocation, New Canaan, the town of New Canaan has about 1.9 million allocation for the town. There is an additional 182 million allocated for Fairfield County, which is to be distributed on a, on a per capita basis. The last time the state did a per capita, they, they did kind of a blended per capita. They looked at the capita, but also took the grand list, relative wealth of the communities into consideration. But if you just look at just the general population of Fairfield County, you know, New Canaan is, is 2%. So just by that number, 2% of 182 million is, is what, close to 3, 3 or 3, a couple of 3 million or so? If they go by just the population, but I think they're going to do some mix of population and, and brand list. So those are the funds that are coming to the town and to the New Canaan. When I, when I asked the question, is board, are, is this included with Board of Ed or is Board of Ed separate? I was told that this is separate from Board of Ed funding. I don't, I haven't, I haven't talked to the, to my colleague Joanne to confirm the facts. In fact, that's their understanding. But it, at least I was told that in addition to this funding, there could be some additional funding that goes directly to the Board of Ed. And then there was some additional funding at the state level for infrastructure and identified for sewer, wastewater, infrastructure development. And that may be appropriated separately. It may be through something similar to what the state does with the capital improvement grants, programs. So there could be some additional capital funding. But it's still fairly early. I haven't seen anything formal from the state yet. But these are just some of the preliminary numbers that were released and we're still waiting to hear. I believe from the time it was approved, communities under 50,000, the funding is going to go through the state. Communities greater than that, they're getting their funding directly from the Treasury. And there is a, there's a time clock on it. I believe the Treasury has 60 days to kind of determine eligibility and to start the disbursement process. Those that are going through the state were given an additional 30 days. So the state has 90 days to determine who gets what and to start the process of dispersment.
Thank you.
Is that specifically COVID reimbursement or that's just generic economic recovery funding?
So that's, that's part of the detail. The, the document that they said, they said some of this could be used directly for COVID response. You know, like PPEs and whatnot. But you can also use that to replenish revenues if you can make the association of the revenue loss was due to COVID. So for example, in our case, parking, you know, we lost almost 1.2, 1.2 billion dollars from the commuter lots and some of the policy changes that were made locally with respect to parking. And therefore, currently, our understanding is you could apply that towards, towards parking as well. And, and general preparedness. But then they also, they carved out, I don't know how this fits into COVID, but there's a carve-out for wastewater improvements as well. So if you had any wastewater types of activities, improvements to plants and so forth, you could use this funding for that as well. It did specifically say that you cannot use this funding to lower your taxes directly. So you can't use it and say, we're going to lower our taxes by X mils and use this funding to make up for the loss in property, or property tax revenue.
And then the assumption in the budgets that we're going to see from a revenue standpoint, what number is in the budget for revenue from, from the government reimbursements to us? Anything or?
No, we did not, we did not budget any government revenue. So any revenue that we see, obviously, you know, we've dipped into our fund balance. We, you know, with a special appropriation, we did 1.9 million for the Board of Ed. We had to make up for the lost revenue and therefore, any revenue that comes in, although not budgeted, would help us replenish the fund balances that we've used to, to deal with the pandemic.
Thank you. That, I guess we're ready to start with, with Dr. Dr. Lutzey and the Board of Education.
Excellent. Thank you, Linda. Dr. Lutzey, the floor is yours.
I think I will. Well, thank you all. It's wonderful to see everybody. John, if you could, as we go through tonight, I'm going to be sharing on and off a couple of different things, if you could give sharing privileges.
To you and to who else? I gave in.
I'll try to do all the driving tonight. We like to keep it, keep it on the road. So I'll do the driving and others will, will speak to it at different times, if that's all right.
All right.
And I think first, I'd like to say, welcome to Chairman Parkill and Katrina, if you'd like to, to be here. But we can't hear you though.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lutzey. Good evening, Chairman Engel and members of the Town Council. The Board of Education is pleased to present our budget for the 2021-22 school year. After an incredibly challenging year, we continue to be grateful for the innovation progress and the extraordinary leadership of our schools over the past year. We have witnessed the strength of our school district. They led with courage and compassion while constantly adopting, adapting, pivoting and navigating a global pandemic. Our administration, our teachers and our staff have been true heroes as they made personal. as they made personal and professional sacrifices throughout the year to keep our schools open and our students in school. We cannot thank all of them enough for being there for our students this year. Before Dr. Lutze and Dr. Keating present the Board of Education's budget for next year, I would be remiss if I did not address the concerns we've raised over the budget process this year. It has, it is, and it always has been our goal to work collaboratively with all of our town boards. As this is the best way to serve our schools and New Canaan. As board members, we have been put in a difficult place this budget season. The Board of Education felt it was important to respond publicly. The claims made through recent press releases that our operating budget was fully funded, this is not true. Our budget was cut by deferring known expenses and promises of contingency funding as well as eliminating our health insurance reserve totaling three point one million dollars in cuts. Our budget is not fully funded and the actions taken were avoidable. Our statutory and town charter procedures have been faithfully and cooperatively applied throughout our budget process in New Canaan for years. It remains unclear in this year of all years, why the Board of Finance rejected this longstanding approach. Throughout the budget process with the Board of Finance, we made multiple attempts to communicate, discuss and highlight concerns with their recommendations. We communicated throughout that a decision to eliminate the reserve was in direct violation of town policy. Responses did not address these concerns directly and no opportunities for public discussion on these actions were provided. The most troubling aspect of this three million dollar cut is that it represents a repudiation of town policy. It provided for shared full funding of the risk corridor of the Board of Education's self-insured health plan that serves our teachers and district employees and has for many years. The BOE takes seriously its responsibility to forecast its operating budget carefully and thoughtfully. As elected volunteers working on behalf of our schools, we have been asked to defer known expenses and rely upon uncertain future appropriations, which is effectively operating at a deficit. Connecticut general statutes prohibit the BOE from operating in a deficit and the town cannot indemnify us for these actions. We will be faced with difficult and impactful cuts to educational programs if this is not addressed. This is unacceptable. We fully respect the Board of Finance's authority to reduce our budget. This is not about that. This is about the transparency of the process and the ramifications to our school district of cutting our budget and in doing so, violating state statute and town charter. In the spirit of good partnership, collaboration and cooperation between our town boards, we respectfully ask for the town council's support in finding a way to correct these actions and fully fund our budget. Thank you all for your continued dedication and service to our town and for your time this evening. Dr. Lutze?
Thank you, Katrina. And it's always dangerous allowing, having you do the intro because you're always a tough act to follow. But I will, I will do my very best. Um, and again, let me just share a heartfelt thank you with the town council. Thank you for inviting us to join you here tonight. The, let, just to begin, as you know, this year, the, the COVID nineteen pandemic has challenged all of us personally and professionally like, like never before. We are navigating uncharted waters and our commitment to care for our students, faculty, staff and community is faithfully serving as our true north and our unwavering guide. History teaches us that authentic leaders step forward when times are tough. They listen to, empathize and assist those who are struggling. They help others confront the difficult facts of the current reality, no matter how challenging. And they anchor everyone's belief that together we will succeed in creating a better future. Throughout the pandemic, district and town leaders have stepped forward. They've led with yes, and they've met the moment with skill and courage. It's been an honor and a privilege to lead our school community through these challenging times. And I am deeply grateful to be part of an immensely dedicated and talented team of educational leaders, municipal leaders and professionals from all, all walks of life. We don't know what challenges tomorrow will bring, but whatever they are, I'm confident that we'll continue to overcome them together. And I just want to take a moment to share a special thank you to all of you as, as municipal leaders, to the members of the Board of Education who are with us tonight, the administrative team that's, that's joining us. Our administrators in the buildings, our teachers, our staff, faculty, everyone engaged and involved with New Canaan Public Schools has gone above and beyond this past year uh, to make every day special, to care for our students, our families, our parents, our community, uh, and to really work through some, some challenges that, um, no one could have imagined just a little over a year ago. Uh, the, I often hear people say that, uh, you know, it's sort of in empathy or sympathy, they say, well, I'm, you know, thank you. I know you didn't sign up for this. And I'm here to tell you that the leadership team of the New Canaan Public Schools, the Board of Education, uh, and in all of you, this is what we signed up for. We signed up to lead our, the community and the school district through good times and bad, to help people through struggles and challenges and to care for those who, um, who we lead. And I'm immensely proud, as you can tell, of, of the work that we've done, what's gotten us to this point. I am very optimistic about what's to come and the futures we continue to work together and, um, wanted to say a heartfelt thank you because, uh, the work that we've done has been transformational and life-changing for all members of the community. And I think one of the, the, as, well, it's a reflective time because only a little over a year ago on March eleventh, we closed our schools. We did something that no, I've never imagined ever having to do beyond a snow day or two, right? Close the schools and for what we thought initially was going to be a two-week period to let the virus run its course. On the thirteenth of March in twenty twenty, we began remote teaching. Uh, despite the feedback from the state and others telling us not to begin teaching, to wait and to give it the two weeks and then return to in-person learning, we didn't, we knew that wasn't the right thing. And as a matter of fact, I hope you don't mind Penny, but you helped us to recognize the severity of what was coming through your experiences in China, with your family in China. Uh, and it was things like that in the community, the EOC and others that helped us to prepare and to get ready. And we began serving, teaching our kids remotely on Friday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty. And little did we know then that we'd be doing the same thing all the way through that entire school year. So, um, there's a lot to be proud of for our school district and for our community. And it just, I think speaks volumes to the, the great partnerships that we've had all along the way, but certainly while we've been so challenged. So tonight, we're here to talk about the future, right? And a very important part of that future, which is how we're going to resource um, the Board of Education's needs going into twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, I was thinking about tonight and thinking also, this is our seventh year, my seventh year, presenting this budget to the town council, um, and going through the process with. And, and you know, there are many, um, smiling faces here that have been here each one of those seven years. And this is one of probably most unusual of years in that, uh, here we are looking at a screen in little boxes using Zoom and, uh, John has made me co-host of a town council meeting. Who would have thought that would ever happen? Um, so it's, it continues to be a year of firsts. Um, but because of the, the format and what we're, how we're together tonight, uh, it's going to be a little bit different than the past. You know, I know in the past, this presentation was a long deck of slides that we would work through and by about thirty minutes in, I know you'd start to get itchy to see the numbers and to get into the budget itself. And I still want to talk about kids and, and program and show you pictures. So tonight, we're going to do it a little bit differently. Um, thought we'd, I, quick, uh, an overview of the budget. I know that you've all been in and out of the, the other meetings. I don't want to repeat myself needlessly. Um, we'll certainly spend time on operating capital and then give some time for some, some dialogue and some questions and answers together. Um, we are here as a team and we're here to share, but equally, if not more, we're here to listen, to learn, to work together and really are grateful for the opportunity to be here with you. So, um, I'll just begin, if, if you'll humor me for a moment. And I'm going to, um, actually pull up a slide that Linda just shared because when I saw it, I had a, a quick thought, if you don't mind. And again, I'm going to be going in and out of slides a little bit. I'll try to, to move relatively quickly, but as I looked at this slide, a, a thought hit me about the difference between the FY twenty sixteen versus the FY twenty seventeen Board of Education's budget. Right here, right? Where you see the jump from ninety-six to one oh four. So we didn't, in our budget, our operating budget certainly didn't increase by that amount in those, the course of those two years. So this, it, my assumption reading, you know, and I may be off, but I would assume that this includes, you know, other capital costs. And I think that that variation shows the volatility that can occur when you do try to build in uh, other, you know, the, the capital improvements, the debt service into budget and look at long-term because things will move in and out of debt service. But putting that aside, if you look at our Board of Education's budget just from twenty seventeen through FY twenty twenty, that's actually a point six three percent CAGR. Right? So it's the, the two point one two is because of the ninety-six in the beginning. But if you look at those, just those four years, point six three. And in sharing that, it just popped into my head as I looked at it. I, I think point six three, uh, certainly reinforces the, uh, the idea that I'd like to highlight in part, which is that we run a highly efficient operation, highly efficient and effective operation in the New Canaan Public Schools. Now, the return on investment that we've provided remains extraordinary. And the results speak for themselves. The, it's been an interesting year. You know, there was no standardized testing last year. And there's lots of conversation this year about should there be, shouldn't there be, how should the scores be used? In many districts, they're, they flounder a little bit to say, so what do we have to show? And boy, do we have a lot to still show about the return on investment, the work that our kids are doing and just that, that school experience for our, for students that we've been able to, to provide. So I'm going to, um, just show you briefly. Yep, there we go. Just a couple of pictures of what's going on in our schools because we, we hear about Plexiglas, we hear about masks, we hear about social distancing. Uh, but until you really see what, what that means for kids, it's hard to imagine what a school, what the school may look like. And you might think, hearing about these things, that school is fundamentally different for kids. And as you'll see in, in these pictures here, yep, they're wearing masks, they're a little further apart, but they're still learning and growing and questioning and laughing and playing and, you know, doing the work that we would expect them to do in school. Here's some of our elementary students. A young girl reading, a young boy building and, you know, wearing masks, but still doing the work that you would expect in schools. We go outside quite a bit more than we had in the past. We've learned that, of course, it's better outside because of the, you know, the, um, the virus itself and how it's transmitted. But now it's one of the things I think that will stay with us. I think we'll continue to always use the outdoors more because the positive, uh, reaction we get from our students as they're engaging. Here's the Plexiglas, at least one example of how we've used Plexiglas on the clover tables where students can be close enough together to collaboratively work through problems. Here they're using math manipulatives. They're working through problems and working on worksheet. And they're talking to each other and they're close enough to help each other. But thanks to the Plexiglas and the masks, you know, they're protected against, uh, COVID as much as we can. Our work in our schools that we've been doing over the years in emotional intelligence and, uh, through the ruler program and through the great work of our, uh, Dr. Bliss and others has really helped to bolster our works into this year as we are, again, in a different kind of environment. We are still anchored by the same values. We use our charter words in our schools and our, each of our classrooms creates representations of what that means. And here's the, um, again, over at East, happy, safe, proud, calm, included and loved as their charter words. Students working together outside. We've had to make some investments. We had to be very nimble, as you know. The last time we were all together was talking in the fall about the special appropriation, these, uh, cube seats, students are able to carry them around, move them even outside or inside as places to, uh, so they can sit together in smaller or larger groups and do their work. Our investment in technology, here's a student using a Chromebook and accessing the, uh, the work that way. Um, here's a group of students on the left who were quarantined as a class. So they're all logged in from home and they're all working on their iPad, on their iPads or their Chromebooks and working with their teacher. So that although they're quarantined and unable to come into school for a period of time, they're still fully participating in the, in the learning, the experience and education. Here on the right is music teacher, uh, Mr. Zhao over at East, taking students outside so they can sing and they can be together and do that. The technology has helped us to make some connections with the community in ways that we hadn't before. Uh, and again, opened up the opportunities for our students to do some really creative things. Over at Saks, the same things are happening where our students are moving through their classrooms. They have our hybrid classes. If students are home for some reason, they can log into a live stream and be a part of the class. Sometimes students in the building are live streaming together to be in a class from different rooms and different locations. And, you know, finally, we're still hands-on, still doing the manipulatives and working through PE program and different things. So the, um, when this all began, our goal really was to go beyond just creating a, a pale replica of what would have existed and creating new, meaningful, deep, um, and memorable experiences for our kids. And as you can see, they're, they're there, they're engaged, they're doing this work. Uh, and that's thanks to the incredible work of the, the leadership team, our principals, our teachers, our Board of Education and everybody coming together to say, you know, we believe education is the most important work on the planet. And we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that every decision we make reflects that value to our entire school community. So the, in building our budget, you know, we had certainly some challenges because we are facing a, we're in an environment we haven't been before and figuring out how best to work our way through. So one of the things we did that I'm immensely proud of is we actually recreated our entire budget, um, binder that you prob, I don't see anyone flipping through pages over there, uh, because now it's all electronic and it's all, all online and in a PDF that has a table of contents and is tabbed that we can jump through. And I'm going to go there momentarily. The great thing about it is if we make changes or additions, we can just make that addition because it's up on the website. Another great thing about it is wherever I go, I just download it into that computer that I'm on and we have it right in front of us and are able to, you know, to access it that way. So tonight, I'm going to use the document itself and we'll jump through and go through some, um, some of the pages. Uh, it's a great, again, a great way to, to be able to, to access the, the budget. And I would, as I do each year, I would encourage anyone who wants to learn more about our budget to read the, um, to read the introductions to each of the sections. Uh, because we do spend, spend quite a bit of time writing up those introductions so that, uh, if people want to learn more about the overall budget, if they want to learn more about the high school or east school or west, south, Saks, they want to learn more about technology, digital, each section here has a narrative that introduces that section. Um, and some are, because of the complexity of the, that area of the budget, some were more, um, detailed than others. And as you can imagine, for me, um, they worked very hard to keep me to seven pages in my executive summary. Uh, because they, that's as much, as many pages as a, on the left. So, um, the budget itself, as I said, you can get to it right from the Board, the Board of Education's website. If you go to ncps-k twelve dot org, click Board of Education, there's the budget link, click there and there's the window pops right up for you. And it, when you, if you set it up on your PDF reader, you can have this table of contents here where everything is linked right through. The table of contents itself is linked where you can move right through. And I do, but I, with all of this, which I think is wonderful, if any member of the town council would like a hard copy, you know, simply let us know, send me a quick note and we can get one to you right away because we do still, we do still make them because we are teachers and sometimes it does feel good to hold paper, to write on paper. So if you, if you would prefer that and you don't have one, just let me know and we'll, we'll get one to you the next, next day or so. Uh, the, as you see, the document itself, like I said, we click right through. So just to begin, in the beginning part of the budget itself, we have our staffing plan. And as again, you'll recall in the past, I would often go through, we'd go through a couple of slides about enrollment and trends. Uh, this is a, a different kind of year for us, given the, um, given the disruption that the pandemic has caused. What we're seeing this year in our enrollment trend seems to, seems to be, um, instead of having students moving in as sort of set times, generally we'd have a wave that could come in right after the, the start of the new year. So January second or so, we'd have students come in, then it'd be quiet. And then it might pick up again, you know, as we go and we were preparing for the following year. What's happened this year is they're continually moving in, uh, and Uh, and transitioning into school and they want to come right in. You know, they're moving into town, um, and instead of finishing up in the town, maybe where they, they are moving in from. They are moving to New Canaan and they want to come right into the schools. Um, so that's, you know, causes us to. To wonder a little bit about what the enrollment's ultimately going to look like when schools open. But because we don't know, we build our budget and plan around the projections that we have. The projections, as you know, have been real, pretty reliable, maybe plus or minus a percent or so. Um, this next year, we're looking at an overall decrease in the projections of eighty students. But the important look is really what's that, what's the distribution of that? Right? So here we have it broken down by school and we have it broken down by grade. Uh, and you see that where there may be, we may be down, like South is a great example. We might be down twenty nine students, grade one, but we're, we're projected to be up thirty three students in grade two. You know, and so it's sort of, it's a give and take and a balance as we look at our staffing and our staff. But it's not just that total number. You know, it's easy to sort of grab onto a number, well, eighty kids, that with twenty a class, that could be four classes. That you're not running, but it's really where the kids are and how they're distributed across the grade that matters. We stay within our class size guidelines, right of sixteen to twenty as much as we can. In K four and then five through eight, we look at twenty to twenty four. And then in the high school, it's really program dependent and we work through that. The. Again, a few more images of our students uh doing what they. The. So our stats, our staffing plan is driven directly from our enrollment. Uh, as we take a look at it. You look and, and this all comes from, I believe you've received these, and if not, and you're interested in getting them, just let me know. We have our staff utilization report, our enrollment reports for certified and uncertain, non-certified. We do these annually. Um, they really are very detailed analysis of our staffing distribution across the board. Uh, we present these out to the Board of Education in, in early November. And we do generally provide them to the town boards, but again, this is a different kind of year because we haven't seen each other in person. So if you haven't gotten them and are interested, again, just send me a quick note, I'm glad, we're glad to send them out. Um, we break down our staffing by our course subjects, special areas. Uh, the, in this budget, I'll talk about this a little bit, there is a. Proposal for a mid-year implementation of a change to school start and end times. And that's really the only variation in our staffing. Uh, as we look from year to year, we looked at the numbers, we looked at the distribution. And um made the decision that the best move was to hold steady where we are. To make adjustments between and among grade levels as necessary. And uh, and then if we have to adjust, make adjustments, but. It's just too unpredictable otherwise. So the transportation here is, is one. We had the other uh point five and that's the only difference year to year in our staff. Now. This page is an important one that I just want to spend a moment on and then we'll transition. Um, after just showing a couple of pages here. You know, we're talking about a ninety five point four million dollar budget proposal. And of course, there are, there's so many lines that go into this and it. You know, we can go line by line by line, but ultimately, one of the ways that we try to explain this to folks is identify and discuss trends. What are the big pictures? What are the trends? And you know, how can we best? Um, explain it to folks and we're glad to get as detailed as we, as you like. And actually, the, one of people, many people's favorite sections. Is this why the budget changes, changed, which goes line and sort of item by item, plus or minus and, and outlines all the changes. But to get a, a high level understanding, uh, we thought it'd be best to take a look at the Board of Education's uh. Budget request and look at that in comparison to last year's budget appropriation, the approved budget. And that, it's different this year because the, we typically look at. Not really, not the overall budget, but what we call the projected. But we're not using projected this year as we look at it in this overall because. Everything again was so disruptive. We projected, for instance, to have a full year of athletics. But we haven't, we, we had to really scale down our program. We didn't have a football program in the fall. The um, the, this seasons have been abbreviated, so we didn't spend all of the money that we anticipated spending there. To compare this new budget against that would automatically put us in a deficit. Right? So instead of looking at the projected, we're comparing its budget. So looking, making these comparisons, there's a few large drivers. That really move the budget. And everything else, you've got some pluses and minuses and some of the ways that we are saving money and our. Energy efficiency and things like that, which you know, we love to talk about, share, glad to do that too. Uh, but the, the couple of the largest drivers, first is the, the COVID expenses. Which we have outlined on page one oh two in the budget itself. Um, which really are the costs that we anticipate meeting for half the year next year. We are all optimistic that with halfway through the year after the first semester. Uh, other impacts from COVID will be minimized to a point where, uh, you know, a few things here and there, maybe we self to do, but not. The large changes that we've had to implement to get us to where we are. So the large drivers in that are, are building substitutes, uh, additional custodians, uh, some cleaning supplies, things like that. It's also things that we have enhanced ventilation in our classrooms right now in order to, uh. You know, keep those rooms as safe as possible. So additional heating fuel, things like that. Um, so that's the, the COVID expenses driver. The next is the Internal Services Fund contribution, which I'm going to hold on and Dr. Kitting will go into that. And the third is the, uh, start and end time change. And the start and end time change. Is a revisiting of the discussion as we had it uh last year. Looking at, but looking at a mid-year implementation. And doing that for a couple of reasons, one, because we anticipate having a disruption beginning of the year. Uh, due to COVID and two, because we want to do what we can to optimize these times. Now, the, the plan we see, the seven forty five, eight thirty and nine fifteen provides forty five minutes between each of the tiers. Uh, and that's uh what we know we can do right now. Uh, but as we get into next year, we would look at, how can we optimize that? Can we make seven forty five, seven fifty? You know, can we, can we eke out a few minutes here and there? We've had multiple consultants, we've been working on this since two thousand seventeen, as you know. Um, we really have, we've looked at the idea of a two-tier solution and have not been able to. Uh, reconcile the, the need to split sacks because of the facility. Uh, and so then our inability to. Uh, move the students, uh, the elementary, keep this elementary students together and um. The timing in, in pulling that together. So we remain uh. Positive about this scenario. Uh, but certainly were to be approved in the budget are, are open to more conversation with others and to, uh. Looking at further refining that seven forty five time. To, uh, to try to make that a little bit later if possible. But as you'll recall, the schedule uh would mean the earliest pickup would be a little bit after seven, seven oh six, I believe was the time. And uh, you know, we, we talked about civil twilight and the, uh, the. You know, like um daylight time for, you know, for students getting on the bus and things like that. Uh, so we don't want to go into more detail than necessary there, but that's the school start and end time change. And that's why it's less than it was last year because we're looking at a mid-year implementation where that makes sense. Uh, the other changes beyond these three things, the other changes are the one point seven four million dollars, which is. Um, a two point one five percent overall increase year to year. And uh, one point nine two over, you know, overall in total, but that's a, is if you pull out the internal services fund. So the Board of Education's request for this year's budget was ninety five point four two four million dollars. The other changes really are driven by, by one thing more than anything else, the contractual salary step increases. And part of that is that we've got a number of folks who are on leave this year, come back. Uh, and the um need to meet our contractual obligations. And then everything else is, is negative twenty sixty five thousand dollars. So that's how we get to our total change. So the um, I know that we want to spend a little time understanding the Internal Services Fund. And how that is managed uh and, and budgeted for. So uh, I think I, at this point, I'll turn that over to the, someone who's much more expert at it than I, uh, Dr. Kitty.
Thank you, Dr. Lutzi, and uh, it's very nice to see everybody. It's been a while, so uh, thank you for having us tonight. So there's three pieces of our budget right now that, um, since we've gone through the first. Couple of phases of our process that are, you know, very important for us to make sure that we communicate clearly. Uh, with this board and others. The COVID expenses, which Brian outlined above, represent about thirty percent of the overall reduction to our budget. The remaining has to do with the Internal Services Fund, so. One of our board members, Brendan Hayes, put together this analysis. And then we're going to transition from this analysis to another page in our budget document. And then to a more um straightforward kind of detailed analysis of the Internal Services Fund. Which we hope um clarifies how the numbers are put together. So as you recall, last year in two thousand twenty one, we actually took a pretty significant reduction. Do we want to go back? Yeah, I just wanted to go through these numbers here. So, um, last year we took a reduction in our contribution from the operating budget. To the Internal Services Fund of two point five million dollars. So as you may recall, our Internal Services Fund is funded, the revenue side of that. Uh, comes from contributions from our operating budget. And then also cost sharing from our employees, teachers, retirement and Cobra. That's about two million, a little over two million. So the combination of those two revenue sources, net any fund balance that we have available. Really defines what we're going to be contributing from the operating budget, right? So we had been in a situation where we had over years period because. We do put our budget together every single year based on the policy that we're funding policy that we have. Um, with the town. And last year we had benefited from some significant savings and stabilization of our claims experience. And in addition to that, shifting some of the corridor responsibility from a sixty percent board of it, forty percent town. We flipped it forty percent board and sixty percent town. So we really came down from eleven in million and change to nine million seven. So one of the things that happened at the end of, um, last year. Was we had projected our claims to be coming in around twelve point seven million dollars. And then COVID hit. And when COVID hit, we saw a dramatic decrease in our claims experience. And we attributed that to two things. Many people were deferring procedures and then others were completely avoiding them. So there was two factors as we dove into, uh, the claims change, the changing claims. And those were the two primary reasons. And so last year we ended up the year with an additional two point two four or five million dollars in our fund balance. So that, as it did in the previous year, was a number that would help us in this current year's planning in twenty one, twenty two. So keep that in mind as we go through this. Um, as you move down, you're going to see some other numbers in our projections. Um, due to COVID, we do have some lower revenue projections mainly from our food services fund. And we have lower net expenditures of approximately five hundred thousand. And that has to do, the five hundred has to do with the fact that we have a few large claimants. That are exceeding our stop loss insurance of three hundred thousand. So we do expect to get that um insurance benefit um of approximately the five fifty. So as you move down, we had analyzed or Brendan had analyzed with us. The real impact for the budget changes in twenty one, twenty two. There were some actuarial experience changes, which was a hundred and sixty thousand. And then there was a, a factor that was put into place for those procedures that were avoided. And we're, we're not avoided, but I should say deferred in the year of um nineteen twenty. So the avoided expenditures that were put into the budget for next year are one point two million. But if you look up it in the top, which we just talked about, the actual under budget was two point two million. So there was actually, it was actually almost fifty percent. Of what we actually um did not incur last year. And that's because there were, there's avoided procedures. We don't expect those to take place, but we do expect that the deferred services will be incurred. The actuarial trend was put in and as you know, our plan year starts in September, so we have more trend that goes into. Our projections on an actuarial basis. We do expect an increase in stop loss insurance and this may be a little light actually going in. Because we do have two very significantly high claimants right now. And then everything else in the plan. Is changing by three hundred and sixty eight thousand. So I'm going to take a pause right there and get a glass of water while, if Brian, you could just continue with these numbers.
Wow, continue with these numbers, that's a taller. What I'll actually do is uh. Jump over to the historical analysis.
All set. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So um. Every year we've been putting this together, um, I think it started prior to my. Time in New Canaan where we simply just recap. Um, our assets, liability and net assets, which means what the fund balances. And compare that to our revenue expenditures. And really come down and reconcile to the same numbers. So you can see the bottom line on both half are the same. And uh, when you take a look at our fund, available fund balances, you're going to see as you go across. The operating income loss, which is down in the second half. You're going to see in fifteen, we were down one point three million. Which means our revenues were less than our expenditures. The next year was very close. The year after that, we picked up, we started to pick up, that was the year. That we fully went into the high deductible health plan with our teachers. And then you're going to see from there on, it's pretty stable on a um. Thirteen million dollar expense program, thirteen to fourteen million dollar expense program, a few hundred thousand. Last year was an anomaly and that was because of the fact that we did have the COVID expenditures that were avoided and deferred. So we've heard some comments that we generally end up with seven hundred thousand left in our, our program every year over budget. That really is not um the way it's played out. And really in seventeen, it was a reflection of, like I said, the high deductible. Plan for the teachers going in full force and then last year it was the COVID. Other than that, we have been fairly close on revenue to expenditure. And when we have had um some surplus in our fund balance, we follow the town's funding policy. And we're going to transition right now to a worksheet that will um hopefully. Provide you some context for the Internal Services Fund. Would you be able to enlarge that a little bit? We lost a little piece of it. Okay. Yeah, okay, okay, there was, I can see it now. Yep. So when, when you take a look at our audited financial report for the Internal Services Fund. Sometimes you're going to see a number that looks rather large. And there's, there's context around that as well. So at the end of last year, we ended the year with six million dollars. And um, that seemed to be um. A concern for some people. However, when you really drill down into it, you're going to see that last year when we planned our budget for this year. We used two point five million dollars from the fund balance to bring down our operating budget contribution, right? So we talked about that last year at length, there's concerns that we were bringing it down by too much. But we felt we had the money in the fund, it was, we conformed to our policy. And that was available to bring down the operating budget. In addition to that, the fund balance also contains a reserve. And this one million fifty four thousand represents forty percent of the board's reserve. Or eight percent of that twenty percent corridor. So when you take those two allocations into account, at the end of the day, at the end of last year. We had a balance of two point four million dollars. And the reason for that again was because of COVID expenses in the last three and a half months of the year. When we looked at that and put together our budget this year. We anticipated in our budget proposal, using those funds to offset our increase. So if you go down to twenty one, which is our current year, we just wanted to show you how the numbers, very simply in bigger buckets. Um, will play out. So our operating budget contribution is at that nine million seven. Our other revenue, again, employee contributions is two point six. So our total revenue stream into the fund this year is twelve point three million dollars. If you take a look at expenses and claims are the biggest bucket there, 13.2 millions was projected for expenditures. And 13.2 million is what we're tracking to, we're tracking very close to our expected claims right now. However, we do have two large claimants in our pool that have exceeded the staff loss. So we did not count on having that in the budget because you can't really determine that. So we're going to get cash in from our staff loss of above a half a million. So we include that in our calculation. So very similar to the, the other years, the employer contribution for the deductible and our administrative costs are a little over 2 million. So our expenditures out of the fund this year are going to be 14.7 million dollars. Our revenue into the fund is thirteen or 12.3. So we are going to run a planned deficit in the fund of 2.4 million dollars. We had in our budget 2.5 million. It's going to be a little bit better. So we're going to pick up in our fund balance 154,000 dollars. However, we have to put a portion of that aside for increased IPNR. So we plan to go into next year with approximately 2.5 million dollars in the fund. So that's how we run it every single year. We take what we have from the prior year, if we have anything, and we roll it right through the P and L to balance into our operating budget contribution. So as we move down to 2022, thank you. So when we start our calculation for 2022, for the new budget year, we actually do not put in the budget request until we go through the entire P and L. So we work with our consultant every year to project out our claims. And this year, we talked about this last year, we're settling in right now around 12.7, 12.8 million dollars in claims. That's basically where we're settling in, and it's similar to the last several years. However, in addition to that, the COVID claim projection has to be put in. And we have to put in for our deductible and the administrative costs. So in 2022, we anticipate right now the cost to be 16.3. Our revenue from other sources is 2.6. So our budget shortfall next year would be 13.7 million dollars if we did not have funding left over from 2021. So you can see the, the number of 22,491 that's remaining next year that we're planning for. We just bring it right down here. And we offset our, our budget of 13.7 million. And our requested budget for 2022 is 11,186. So it's a straight calculation. It comes straight off of the funding policy that we have. Now, when you take a look at that funding requirement for next year and you compare it against the 2021 operating budget, there's a decrement, a difference of 1.4 million dollars, and that's what we requested in our budget. What actually occurred in our budget is that the, the Board of Finance is recommending funding our operating budget for this particular line, the contributions to the ISF at 8,942809. It's actually 815,606 dollars less than that, than the 2021 budget, which in and of itself was decreased by 2.5 million dollars. So we're looking at a shortfall or a gap in our budget right now of 2.2 million dollars. And that's where there's a significant concern in our part. Because we can expect these claims, we can reasonably expect these claims to come in as projected. The 12,748 is pretty much flat from prior years. It doesn't even include trend. And the 1,002 is almost half of what we avoided in 1920 for COVID expenses. So this is where our concern comes into, we genuinely and truly believe based on our actuaries calculations that we will be short next year in our budget. And that represents more than two months of claims. And so in order for us to meet the gap in our budget and not over expend our budget next year, there's some decisions that will need to be made. And we wanted to share this with the town council so that you really truly understand where we're coming from and that these numbers are thoughtfully put together.
So I'll be glad to, after, after tonight, I'll share. There's an echo somewhere. Okay, after tonight, I'll share these documents with the town council as well, so you can you know, have, have those to, to walk through. This one in particular, the others were directly from the budget document itself, but the one of the things we've noticed is that we spend an awful lot of time talking about operating, which then squeezes out time to talk about capital. And I know that, that town council is equally interested in both. So I'm glad to take a pause here if you have, there are any questions or follow up or comments, what have you, or we can transition into capital and do all questions afterwards. That's, we're here to serve, so whatever's best for you.
Ask a quick question. The the deferred services that, services that were deferred as a result of COVID. I, I'm confused. How do you determine if something was deferred because of COVID?
Sure.
Wouldn't they just be a claim this year? I, I'm just not clear on that.
Sure, let me go right to the page in the budget. And I will to, to share with you what we mean. So it's in page 125. We're calling it COVID restored programs. I think, Murray, this is what you mean, what you're asking. So these are programs that either ran and at a smaller scale or sometimes didn't run. So it's restoring different funds. For instance, the, I mentioned before this, the unpaid leaves of absence and full salary, that's the largest driver for sure. But many of these are, they certainly are sizable. One is stipends, for instance, you know, the co-curricular stipends. We couldn't run our co-curricular programs the way that we generally do. At the high school, we'll, we'll generally run six plays, you know, three in the fall, three in the spring. And we've had to scale that way down just because of, you know, the impact of COVID. The
Maybe I, no, I meant the, under the insurance, the 1.2255.
Oh, sure. Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. Let me determine if a service was deferred as a result of COVID.
So if I may, Brian. So when we talk to our consultant and the actuary, they have factors that they model within the claims experience for historically, for the last several years. And they look at what's scheduled and what was not incurred was not taken out. Because if you recall last year, and actually into this, much of this year, people, you know, hospitals were reserved for COVID patients. And they were not bringing in, you know, typical routine type of procedures. But you know, if you need a knee replacement, you need a knee replacement. And if you couldn't go in for last year and they know that that is in the pipeline, then they are put aside, you know, an amount of money for that. And they calculated that on the amount that was of funds that were not spent. So a hundred percent, about 50 to 60% were actually avoided. The, the rest of them were basically, or I should say deferred. The rest of them were completely avoided because people either were not going outside and getting hurt in activities. They were not going for, you know, their exams, their regular exams. So it was a calculation that is part of an industry calculation across the, the book of business for carriers where they want to ensure that people are prepared for those type of claims because they exist and they're in the pipeline. So it's a, it's a calculation that is done by people who have an expertise in this area, but much more than I do.
Well, my second thought was if, you know, the money that may come to New Canaan and reimburse the town or, you know, as part of that economic money that's coming to us, if we can connect the water treatment authority to COVID, is COVID, is this the kind of expense we could connect to COVID and therefore be reimbursed? Just a thought for later on.
I mean, I'll certainly look into that. Every grant that, the two grants that we have in the pipeline right now, one is S R two, this type of expenditure does not qualify.
I, I wasn't thinking, you know, that reimbursement, it's the one that Linda mentioned earlier. I'm just curious if it, if it's something that can be tied to COVID, something to think about, maybe it's a reimbursable expense through that money that comes to the town. Just a note.
We'll look into it. I'm sure Linda will as well.
Thank you.
We can move on to capital.
Okay. To go back to my shared budget screen. Great. So as you are well aware, the Board of Education and District, annually, we update our five-year plan on capital. We work, we began categorizing the items to show if they're, they're right on schedule as they have been planned, you know, in this. If we had to accelerate them for some reason, defer, or if there's something new. And generally, we, we try to be consistent here in our planning, as you can imagine. And a five-year plan is a wonderful place to begin. But things happen and things change and things break and we have to make adjustments where appropriate. The, in the book itself, we summarize the capital items here and we'll, we'll run through these quickly. But then we also do provide a sentence or two sort of background or overview as well going in. And you know, certainly our capital budget consists of three large items, right? One's facilities capital, one is our van, and the third is our technology capital. But this is the largest driver. So this is where, you know, anywhere I think we should begin. The Dr. Katie, would you like to talk through this quickly?
So each year, under our district budget for capital, we put in engineering services. And we've had a lot of success in putting together our specifications the year before we actually put the larger ticket items in our budget so that we come to the, the boards with some pretty good hard numbers. So next year, we have the high school coming online. The 100,000 is really dedicated to the roof. We may actually capitalize this 100,000 in the bond project. I'm going to have to talk to Linda and see what his preference is there. We have engineering services for a number of projects. And then we put aside 50,000 for engineering services for the CHP project that is coming up. And we'll talk to the advisory committee about that in another few weeks. But we had a good meeting today with Tiger, Joe, Dan, Scott Olson, and our staff and myself. And I think we have a pretty good strategy moving forward. As you take a look at all the schools, we've been putting money aside for painting in the last several years. And it's gone to very good use. We've really done a lot of work. And you know, at some point in the future, this might drop off for you, for you a few years. But right now, it looks like it's, you know, we still have a few years left. We're working with Tiger on the parking lot at East and will be, that's been included in the budget. And then you're going to see at both South and at East, we do have upgrades to our PA system. And it's the main communication systems that we have within our schools. We have done West already, that was done a few years ago out of absolute need. But right now, we're spending almost as much as this to repair. And the upgrade is just going to really stabilize those two particular systems. When you move over to South, you're going to see that we have some more work with Tiger. The playground stair repair needs to be done. It's really a risk mitigation issue that we have. We have the rear sidewalk and the court repave that we need to get done. And we also have a boiler replacement project and there, there's two boilers at South that need to be replaced. We're entering our end of life on all the boilers at the elementary school. We're taking care of sacks right now. We did last year one phase. This coming budget to face, the phase two. But each of the elementary schools are at that 30-year mark. And we're starting with South because it's the most needy. Moving down to West, we're not certain that we're going to have this project, the $300,000 parking lot renovation project. And it really depends on whether or not natural gas is put in this summer. It may be deferred, but at a minimum, the parking lot is in desperate need of being patched and resurfaced in certain areas. So he'll determine, you know, exactly how much that's going to cost. Moving down to Saks, we have in the budget, phase two of the CHP cogeneration plant. We are talking right now about shifting phase two over to the high school. So we have a phase one at Saks, which is being installed this summer and maybe a phase two at the high school. We think the payback might very well be better maximized by taking that approach. But we're going to need, as I said before, to go before the advisory committee with that recommendation. Boiler replacement is phase two. Those are hard numbers. It's been bid out. And we have the successful bidder from phase one on board to finish that project. Painting, of course, at both Saks and the high school. And some good news on the roof replacement project. We had brought this budget down to 2 million at the Board of Finance. We opened bids today and we should be right within that $2 million. So back in, I think it was 14, when it was first estimated. And of course, the market on petroleum probably was much different. But the roof replacement at the high school looked to be around 7 million. Based on the bids, it's going to be below four. So that's, that's a good, good news kind of story. And the low bidder is the same company that did both South and East, which we've been very satisfied with. As Brian mentioned, we are in our sped transportation vehicle replacement program. We have the, this is the last of the two wheelchair vans that needs to be replaced. And then we'll be done with them for, you know, eight to 10 years. And then the lease, which has been instrumental in getting us where we are today for, through the COVID. I can't say enough about having had this in place, who would have known whenever you put it in place years ago, that this really enabled us to do what we did in the beginning of the year and get our kids where they are today in terms of hybrid and remote learning and one-to-one in the classroom, which was absolutely necessary with the pandemic. So that summarizes it.
So the, the bottom line number is a little different in that it's the, this includes the 3.5 for the roof. So it's 1.5 less there for the total, total request. Okay.
Ask a general question on that, Brian. Sure, join in. If you take a look at the total town plus Board of Education capital plan for 21, 22, and then 22, 23, 21 is 26 million dollars relative to 16 last year. And then when you go to, when you go to 22, the 26 million goes to 30. And my question is a funny one for me, but it is, given those two years are so, are so big and interest rates are so low, is, is there any capability actually to accelerate anything from 23 that we know we're going to do into 22? Can we, how much, what capacity can we manage in terms of actually buying capital? I mean, we're going from 16 million to 26 and then to 30.
I mean, we can accelerate if that makes sense from a financial perspective, certainly. We, we do have the capacity internally to do additional projects. So for example, the boiler replacement project at South can be expanded to East and, and West. It's just a matter of, you know, pushing out the specs that we've already developed and just being more specific on the individual plants and put it out in the street. So that's certainly a possibility. And then floor tile replacement is a big one at East. It's also a big one at South. I mean, the floors really are, you know, 40, 50-year-old vintage. Those are projects that we can manage because they're, contractors are coming in to do those projects. And we just have to do the oversight management of them. But those certainly
Joanne, what kind of boilers are you planning? Is it gas? Is it oil?
No gas. They're condensing, yeah, condensing boilers.
All of them, okay.
So Rich, just back to your question, would you like us to, we'd be glad. So Rich, just back to your question, would you like us to, uh, we'd be glad to come back, you know, take a deeper dive into the future projects and just and come back with some that could be accelerated if the town council felt it was appropriate.
Well, we can't add any money, so it would be, it would be hard for us to do that, but I think it's worthwhile to understand the the capabilities we would have just in a general sense, uh, you know, so is it worth doing any, any kind of, you know, real real detail? I don't think it's worthwhile, especially if we just don't have the capability between the two organizations, the town and ourselves. And as I said, it's an unusual question because normally we wouldn't want to accelerate anything with a one and a half or two percent interest rate. And and we know there's several things that we're more than likely going to do in terms of buildings that that take this thing up.
Rich, if I may, if we're saving on the roof at, uh, the high school, we could defer some of that money over to the other projects for the boiler.
That's right. It it it's a question that I think that that we should ask the Board of Finance or and or the town, et cetera, to just consider whether whether these two years are are very big. They're very big for a good reason. We we need a lot of stuff and they're, and it's a very good time, I think, presuming costs don't go through the roof to to invest in our infrastructure, uh, with the low interest rates and and higher probability of inflation in in buildings, et cetera, going forward.
Sure. And some of these things are reaching the end of their useful life, you know, like the, uh, the boilers, for instance, you know, so we staged them out, so it's not all a big hit, but. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of the Board of Education present budget presentation? If there are no questions, then we'll move on to fire and police.
Well, I I have a question. I I know that, um, Katrina, Katrina handled the controversy and you guys, uh, were able to deliver, um, you know, very, very articulate, very organized, very clear, uh, a- analysis of of the budget, but the controversy remains. Uh, I guess the question that I'm gonna be struggling with over the next few weeks is is what what is the impact on your effectiveness and the effectiveness of the schools? What's the potential threat of the of this controversy, this confusion? It almost feels like, like a car wreck happened on the corner of South and 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 Farm. And, uh, I wanna understand, you know, what happened, but the first question is what, what impact does this do? I mean, do you do you feel less appreciated, less respected? I mean, h- how, um, wh- what's the impact?
Well, in a, in a practical.
Future programs?
In a practical sense, um, it's the responsibility of the Board of Education to, uh, fully fund expenditures, right? The Board of Ed is not, uh, permitted to deficit spend in Connecticut. So we have to, if we anticipate that we need an additional two point one million dollars in our, in the insurance in order to cover those costs, uh, then we have to make some hard decisions to figure out how to do that. The, um, there's also language about in the statute about contingent appropriations. And that, um, for bo- for towns to, um, fund, get provide an appropriation for Board of Education through the budget process, uh, and to that it's inappropriate to fund through contingent appropriation. So if you spend this, then we'll give you that. Uh, so I think that, uh, you know, where we are now is, is in a place where, you know, we wanna talk about some poss- some paths forward, you know, I think some possible solutions. But we're, we're not in a great place overall because we, that's why we we wanted to share with you the whole picture of the budget. Uh, but as we look at things right now, uh, we would have to identify a pathway forward to fully fund our anticipated costs in insurance. Uh, because as you know, the, again, we can't deficit spend, so we can't spend the money and then go ask for it. We have to plan this out. And if we were to get, run into a deficit in a Board of Education's budget, then, um, the, the Board of Education and the administration are, um, responsible for that and can be held personally liable for it. And there is no indemnification against that, um, because of the the statutes and the, you know, the way that things are covered. So me, I I wouldn't go so far to say we're looking at a train wreck on Farm or a car wreck on Farm South, um, for a number of reasons, um, in part because they're surrounded by our schools. But I would say that, um, the path is a little bit longer than it generally, than it has been in the past, that we've got a few things to figure out, um, before we we get to a place, I think, where the Board of Ed is confident moving forward with its budget.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I I don't really wanna continue on this because this is not on my agenda. We have a presentation on our agenda from the Board of Education. The presentation is over. We've entertained some questions. I'd like to move on. The police are waiting patiently to make their presentation. So if there's nothing further, Leon, you have.
I do. Could 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 I leave it on a a nice note, though?
Okay, only if it's a nice note.
Cause I thought the presentation was, um, your stereotypical, very detailed, very efficient, very effective, a very impressive one, uh, all of you in the Board of Education. This has been an extraordinary year for everyone and, um, I think we all need to say thank you to all of you for your commitment to uh, all of our 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 kids and, uh, you know, smooth functioning of the, of the educational system. And, um, I just didn't want the evening to not acknowledge, um, that you all have a great deal to be proud of.
And John, I just wanna echo what Penny said. I I deal with a lot of folks from different towns and collectively, I I've heard for the past year, I don't know how your school system does this, but my town isn't doing what your town's doing and we're, we're so jealous. Uh, kids that are not in school, parents that are pulling their hair out, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard that over the past year and how proud I am and, you know, everyone in New Canaan is about how great, uh, you guys have handled it. Brian, you you deserve a lot of credit. I think you're emulated throughout the state, so well done. Hats off from New Canaan.
Thank you, Steve.
And I work in Danbury and all I hear from all the people who live in the cubes around me is we don't understand why we can't do the same thing in our school system that you guys are doing down there. So thanks again, folks. Really, really appreciate it and look forward to bringing this debate further.
Thank you.
Okay, Leon, uh, floor is yours.
Green sharing?
Yes, you have, uh, I think you have it.
Do you see that?
No, no. Yes.
Excellent. Well, thanks, everybody. Uh, I'll make this very efficient and, uh, I appreciate everyone's attention tonight and the theme for this year for twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one was, uh, four P, I call it. First P was pandemic. Second P was protests. Third P was police accountability. And the fourth P, which should make everybody smile, is puppies. So we're gonna talk about all those in some respect. So we're very thoughtful in the way we build our budget and, uh, very proud of how we do it and the services we provide for the town. And, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about return on investment, what we give you guys for your dollars that everybody earns very hardly. Uh, we're gonna talk about our animal control, then we're gonna talk about accomplishments, twenty twenty-one goals, our capital, our operating staffing and overtime. So we'll give you a little outline for where we're going. So animal control, right? If that doesn't make you smile with us, if if you're sad about something tonight, look at those puppies. Makes everybody happy, right? And they're in good homes now, so that's a great thing. Great story, excellent work by, uh, Allison Hom, our animal control officer. The many volunteers, our our cert folks, uh, I think the town really came together to take care of these little guys and, uh, they're very appreciative of it and, uh, they're in good homes now, so it's certainly great news. So animal control summary, uh, zero percent cap, zero percent increase for capital. Uh, F Y twenty-two is one oh three, three, six, four, which is a five point one percent decrease. And that's a result of, uh, part-time animal control hours being cut. And, uh, I I spoke to Allison and she's very comfortable with that. It's very challenging to try to hire part-time animal control folks that are certified. Um, so she's comfortable the way it works now and, uh, perhaps next year we'll revisit it and change that, but right now we're very comfortable operating in that manner. And I think, uh, no one could argue the services that she provides and officers provide as we support her. I'll talk about the police department, your return on investment. I think everybody likes to hear about that. So, uh, there's a little snapshot of, uh, twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty-two, uh, something very telling. Uh, I think it's certainly directly related to COVID is forty-seven percent increase in psychiatric calls, uh, forty-one percent decrease in at motor vehicle accidents. So that's certainly good news and I, and I you maybe shudder a little bit when people were talking about Farm and South traffic crash before, so, uh, we'll talk, the good news is traffic accidents are down dramatically, so that certainly makes us all happy. And, uh, you could see a little side-by-side comparison there. And we're not quite back to normal levels yet of our activity. Uh, it's slowly getting there, but we're, I think it'll take, uh, another six to eight months before we're back to normal activity levels. And, uh, speaking of activity levels, uh, the bad news is that we've seen a, seen an unprecedented increase in larcenies from vehicles. Um, there's a little map of the town. It shows you where all the little, uh, crimes are occurring, so it's pretty widespread, mostly centered in the town, but there's some outskirts too. And, uh, you know, if you, if I can't say it enough, I'll say it again and tell all your friends and neighbors. You know, lock your car, take your valuables inside, don't leave them in the car because ultimately you're gonna become a victim and not only will your property be stolen, but your, your identity might be stolen too. So, um, that's certainly a challenge. And we're seeing things we've never seen before. Uh, about a month and a half ago, we had a gentleman from, uh, Newark, New Jersey come in a stolen car, uh, intent on stealing from cars. Good news is he didn't know how to drive in the snow, so he crashed his car and, uh, ended up chasing him on foot to some degree. Um, he ended up stealing a car because the owner left the keys in it. He crashed that car too. And ultimately our officers caught him and arrested him and, uh, he's facing the criminal justice system, but, uh, he's got pretty significant criminal histories that tells you how good the pickings here are in New Canaan and that people from as far away as New Jersey are coming here. So that's something I'm not proud of, but happens to be happening and, uh, awareness is the big, uh, message, I think, tonight. And those are the stolen vehicles, twenty-seven versus ten. So it's almost a triple increase, substantial. I mean, I remember the years when we'd have one or two stolen vehicles a year, so this is really unprecedented and, uh, typically the vehicles are recovered within a day or two, usually in Bridgeport, uh, Hartford area, Waterbury, somewhere like that, sometimes out of state, but that's rare. And, uh, usually it's a joyride kind of thing where they, sometimes they commit crimes with the vehicles that they steal. Um, and so that's certainly a concern too. And, uh, something we saw in the last couple of months too, we've never seen before is guns being stolen from vehicles. Um, that's certainly a huge risk for the community or for our officers, so, um, that's a big concern of ours and we can't say that message enough. You know, please take your keys inside, lock your cars and and don't become a victim. Some highlights in twenty twenty, successful virtual law enforcement audit. Hundreds of files were reviewed and we met all their standards and, uh, very proud that we're one of only three Kalia agencies in Fairfield County, uh, thirteen percent in Connecticut and less than five percent nationally. So that's something to be very proud of. I think it helps us make us, makes us a great agency and it makes us, uh, follow best practices and do the great things that we do, which we're gonna talk about shortly. So obviously, everybody was challenged by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, our officers were on the front lines of this and it was very difficult. Uh, thankfully, things are getting better now, but I don't think we're, we can let our guard down just yet. Um, but, uh, we're very hopeful that things are gonna get back to normal in the next six, eight months, ten months, something like that. Uh, we also, uh, had to deal with something unprecedented, which was a response to calls for police reform. And we're in the midst of complying with a whole litany of, uh, laws related to police accountability, which we'll talk about a little bit as we come forward. Uh, and in twenty twenty, we continue to work the missing person murder investigation. Uh, we continue to search for Jennifer and our state police partners continue to do great work there. And, uh, obviously we have two folks that are, uh, pending, uh, justice in our system. And, uh, great work there all around, I think, by everybody involved, pretty much unprecedented work and, uh, in a, in a tragic situation. As I mentioned previously, big drop in motor vehicle accidents, largely related to COVID because of drop in traffic levels. Uh, our sworn officers staff is very diverse. I think, uh, a lot of folks don't realize that. We're about twenty percent, uh, diverse in African-American and Hispanic, uh, which is a high level in comparison to our community. And so we have the most Hispanic officers, the most African-American officers and the most female officers ever in history at this point, so that that's a great thing. We're proud of and hope this makes, makes us a great agency. And, uh, another thing we never dealt with before, we've never had a large peaceful protest or even small ones, um, that were significant. So that kind of gives you the idea there. If you weren't there, that gives you the idea of the crowd that came up South Avenue. And, uh, the good news is it was a very peaceful, thoughtful, uh, group of folks that were, uh, protesting things that weren't happening in our area but happening nationally. And, uh, you know, I was fortunate enough to be at the front of that protest. And, uh, towards the end, uh, something made me very proud was, uh, a gentleman came up to me and he said, uh, you know, I don't live here, I'm not from the area, but if every police department was like your police department, we wouldn't have any problems in in our nation. That's something that's, uh, very telling about how well we, we try to treat everybody fairly, equally and respectfully, and I think that goes a long way. It's right in front of the police department, um, moment of prayer, uh, something we can all be proud of. And that's something else we do. We help people. So, uh, that's a great thing. We can help people that are in in need and, uh, I think it makes uh, the public appreciate our officers even more when we can do little things like that. And it's nice to see people say they love us because, uh, lots of times they don't and lots of, uh, times we see on the news, the negative stories. Um, so these are the positive ones that will support us and keep everybody's morale up and, uh, makes every officer come to work every day and trying to do the best they can. And, uh, this community also supports us by giving donations, some kind bars there. We always appreciate that. More highlights in twenty twenty, uh, we strengthened our crisis intervention training, uh, response to behavioral health incidents. Um, obviously the, because of the significant increase in psychiatric incidents, um, that training really comes into play and helped us, uh, deescalate a lot of situations and handle them perfectly. We also, uh, completed training and issuing all the rap to our crisis intervention officers. And, uh, we were the first agency in Connecticut to issue that tool. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll never have to use it, but if we do, we think it it has its place and it'll reduce injuries for both, uh, the person in in distress and also our officers. We investigated many complex crimes, uh, fraud, theft, retail crime, a bank robbery, uh, news on that coming soon. Uh, you'll see some, uh, some people being brought to justice in the near future, so that's certainly good news. Kind of scary, but, uh, these things do happen in our town and our officers are well prepared to handle them. And we also arrested an adult predator and for a juvenile crime victim. That's the bank robbery. That's the predator we arrested. He came from out of state and he actually, uh, connected with, uh, a juvenile on social media. And he, uh, groomed this juvenile and he came to town and there was a sexual assault. And the good news is we arrested him and ultimately the FBI took the case because it was across state lines and, uh, he's gonna spend, uh, a fair amount of time in jail, um, as part of that, but it gives you an idea of the risks and and how New Canaan isn't so isolated, uh, especially with social media and the risks that are out there. Goals for twenty twenty-one, we're closely with our schools to minimize the availability of drugs. Uh, hopefully, when things normalize, we'll be able to reconnect about the M O U to see what makes sense to try to mitigate drugs in our schools. Uh, enhanced community policing outreach, Coffee with a Cop, civilian police academy, those are all things that have been, uh, we've been able to do, unable to do due to COVID, so we'd like to start those again. And of course, comply with the police accountability law. Focus training to enhance officer safety, uh, relentless education about locking your car and crime prevention. And the good news is we were able to, uh, restaff the, uh, community impact downtown officer position. Officer Kelly Coughlin is in that position now. And she's connecting with the business community and all the folks in the center of town, having a good impact there and and hopefully making everybody feel a little bit safer and a little bit more secure, uh, given all the craziness that's going on in our world. We will continue to do targeted enforcement at, at high accident locations. And, uh, good news is our P D building renovation and or new P D building is moving forward, so we're very, uh, happy about that. So ninety-four years old, uh, gonna be new some point. Um, lots of work ahead, but we're getting there. Building committee is doing exceptional work and. Building committee is doing exceptional work and hopefully there'll be a decision within the coming months about what direction we're going. Now I'll get into our capital summary now. For capital quest for twenty twenty-two is three, six, four, seven, five, oh. That is two vehicles, which is in line with our five-year capital plan, which is two, three, two, three, two. And our TASER replacements, bulk group vest replacements. Video and recording equipment that is end of life, that's our dispatch center and also under our booking jail area. However, the bulk of this is, which is two hundred and twenty-six thousand is a result of the police accountability law. And there's two parts of that legislation that are challenging. And it requires everyone to have a body camera, you may not know, but we've had a body cameras for about seven years. We were one of the first agencies in Fairfield County to get them. And they've been a great tool and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they show our officers doing great things and sometimes we've had. People make false complaints against our officers and those work really well, telling the whole story. But the law now requires everyone, including me, to have a body camera at all times whenever they're in uniform, so that is requiring us to buy about fifty body cameras. And that's not the challenge in itself, the other part of the challenge is we now have to have cameras in all of our marked police vehicles. And they're fairly expensive and the complicated part is the body camera and the in-car cameras need to coordinate. So if you're about to make a motor vehicle stop and you activate your in-car camera. When you go up, then the body camera needs to take over and when you come back into the car, the body, the car camera takes over. And there are storage issues related to that and all the equipment and. Many years ago, we had in-car cameras and they were very unreliable. And they weren't very useful, but unfortunately we have to get them, we don't have a choice, it's a law, so that's what we're going to comply with. As you know, our vehicles are offices for officers and essential emergency equipment. We're now largely, our fleet is Ford SUVs, which are very reliable and safe in all weather conditions. Industry best practices are replaced between eighty and eighty-five thousand miles. That's a little snapshot of our marked operational fleet. And that gives you an idea of where our mileage are at and how our replacement schedule, so you'll see. Three of those vehicles come off and when the new ones come in for this year. And then two more in a subsequent year, so the fleet's pretty healthy right now and stable. So we're very happy about that five-year capital plan and how we plan things. There's really no issue with that. Gives you an idea, here's more benchmarking comparing us to Darien, Greenwich, Norwalk, Stanford, Westport, Wilton. Obviously, Darien and Wilton are probably the most comparable departments. So we get between two and three a year, Wilton is five and six and Darien is three and five, so we're very conservative in our replacement schedule. So that should make you even more comfortable approving a two, three, two, three capital replacement schedule for our vehicles. Any questions about capital? Hearing none, I'll move on to operating. So our operating quest for FY two-two is a point nine percent increase compared to FY twenty-one, very conservative. And we'll talk through that. One of the items that allows us to get to that point nine is our salary offset. That's projected two vacancies for nine months at our top level and give you an idea, right now we're about. We're slightly under budget, so we're on track this fiscal year to be under budget and if all goes well, we'll be under budget. In a few months when it completes, so we're very comfortable with that salary offset based on. Roughly seven or eight officers right now could retire and it takes more than nine months typically to hire and train them. So we're pretty comfortable with that offset. And that gives you an idea of how we carefully go through line by line and we increase or decrease based on our needs. And things that we were projecting. Talk about staffing, so eight sworn members are eligible for retirement, so that's why it's really important to keep our staffing. Full and right now we are fully staffed, we have forty-seven officers, we do have an officer that's. In military leave for about a year, so that detracts from our staffing, but. We don't have any vacancies or any retirements we need to complete right now. Long hiring and training timelines require us to keep filling the vacancies as soon as possible. Give you an idea, that's complexity of our staffing, related to school resource officer, community impact officer. Investigative section, patrol, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why it's important to keep our staffing levels complete and full and they are right now. And we'll talk about overtime. So overtime is based on historical spending and tied to labor agreement obligations. However, our overtime is less than eleven percent of our aggregate salaries. Whereas nationwide, many departments average eighteen percent of their aggregate salaries, so. It's lower than than a typical department nationwide, so that's certainly good to know. And benchmarking is our overtime spending is in line with comparable police departments and other emergency services and it's actually very conservative. And that's the question I ask every year when we ask for overtime number. That gives you an idea right there of how we spend our overtime, that's almost a ten-year history and very conservative, so we're. Thirty for FY twenty-two. And we're projecting to be a little bit over budget potentially for FY twenty-one. But right now it's tracking and it could be under budget, but we'll be able to cover that within our operating. And POS is our police officer scheduling system, which you folks kindly enough approved about five or six years ago. And that allows us to track and carefully, carefully know what our staffing deficiencies are and how we can fill them. Why we're spending overtime and that gives you an idea right there, it's about sixty-one percent of our spending. So that's something to be reassured about, that we're very careful on how we spend the town's money. That's our goal, adopt a realistic and attainable overtime budget based on historical spending and contractual obligations. And overtime budget request is five thirty. Twenty-one forecast is about five forty, but we will be fine, I think we'll be actually under that right now. And sending with puppies. That doesn't make you smile, nothing should, right, that's our officer Cece. She was a volunteer and she helped take care of those puppies and she actually has one of them. So that's certainly great, great stuff that we're able to do with the community and take care of those little puppies, so. That doesn't make you, doesn't end your night nicely, I don't know what will. Glad to answer, any questions you folks have?
If I have a question regarding the body cameras and the car cameras, is there, are there any grants or state funding that can help with that?
There are promises, but nothing's been delivered yet.
Promises for part, for whole, what are the promises?
It's unclear, last person I spoke with was Will Haskell and he said that he was going to help with that. But so far, no one's delivered any kind of promises for any part of that funding. And my understanding is the cities may see some funding, but I suspect our town will see very little, if any.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Hearing none?
This is the first time in how many years you've been at a full complement?
Oh, it's a first time in, boy. I don't know if there's been a year where I've done a presentation where we've been full, so that tells you how rare it is.
Yeah, I was surprised to hear it, I mean, I was happily surprised to hear it because I think we authorized forty-seven, five years ago and. It's taken us five years to get there.
Yeah, exactly, through luck and some hard work to some degree.
But I think there's a scarcity across the state of new trained officers, right? You're competing with other departments across the state, so to what you attribute the success.
You know, it's, it's, some of it is, you know, I think our best recruiters are our own officers, so some. Some officers are recruited by word of mouth and they end up staying on board. And other times it's, you know, we're lucky, we've gotten some officers from some municipalities that don't like their police departments and want to cut them. And want to eliminate numbers and some officers have come from there. And you know, to some degree, we're a victim of our own success because. I think although statewide, frankly, nationwide, there's a shortage of police officers, it's probably going to get worse. Because a lot of folks that are on the fence aren't going to go over the fence and. Come onto policing with all the things that are going on in our world about police accountability and everything. So I think it's only going to get more difficult and you're seeing a lot of retirements across the nation. Folks that have had it and just don't want to be policemen anymore. But the good news is, you know, we have great people and we are able to hire and retain them and. Right now we're full complement and very happy about that, especially considering diversity of our workforce and the historical numbers that we have, we've never seen before.
I would have liked more vehicle photos, but I think my favorite photo was the parade coming down South Avenue. I really like that photo.
Yeah, it's a good one.
The puppy photo is okay too. Thanks, Leana.
Chief, one of the, chief, real quick, one of the things that I think you guys have done very well is recognize Steve Wood and the historic. Historic nature of what a great officer he was and how much he did for New Canaan and naming. An officer of the year is such a great honor in his name, so well done, I think it was Rex this year and. You know, and you mentioned it before, but your ability to hire some real quality people. To the PD has been really remarkable, especially over the last five years. You mentioned diversity, I mean, our force looks so much different just in five years than it did before, so. You're doing a great job in terms of hiring and the folks that are on the street every day are really, really having New Canaan's best interest in mind.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, it's a team effort, right, there's no, there's no I in team, so I don't do anything alone, it's everybody. Working together cohesively to get these kinds of things done and handle the tough things that we have to handle and. And work together to try to serve the community as best we can. And I think the community is very supportive and they, they frankly, I, I haven't, I've seen more support than not support. This past year, so that's something very endearing. But I think the difficulty is, is the police accountability law. Some aspects of it frankly are going to be a financial strain and in my opinion, they're not going to help. Make our department any better, they're just going to burden us with some financial obligations. And one of the things that is in the police accountability law that people don't really realize is. The requirement that everybody is a Kalia agency, so. But my understanding unfortunately is the legislators are buckling under to that and they're not going to, they're not going to. Enhance, they're not going to require that, they're going to make it something less than Kalia. Some kind of accreditation, but not quite that, so that's the one thing I think in the whole body of the law that might make a department a better department. Because all the obligations and the four hundred standards you have to follow and all that. But it sounds like that might get changed, so that's kind of a disappointing part of that.
Anything further, any parting remarks?
All our thanks. We love them.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Ben. And then I guess next we have up Fire Thirty Minutes, Jack Hennessy. Do I see, there, there he is, the floor is yours, chief.
Thank you, can I share a screen?
Yes, you have it now.
We sent our PowerPoint out earlier in the week and it should be on everybody's tablet so they can see it. And if you had any questions, you might be able to have them primed and ready for us as we proceed. We sent out our annual report to everybody around January of this year, which highlighted everything that we did in calendar two thousand and twenty. And explained to everybody what we do and what we did. And budget expenses, where the money went, the activities we performed. And just to keep everybody in the loop on what we had done throughout the year in order to keep this evening's meeting, for example. Sure, we know that you have a lot of business to do, we want to get through our presentation in a timely manner. Two thousand twenty-one accomplishments, our replacement rescue truck is under construction right now up in Watertown, Connecticut. We expect delivery in September, we had hoped to have it in the spring, but COVID and material shortages pushed it back a little bit. Our fire marshal Fred Baker retired this year and Paul Payne transferred over from the building department to the fire marshal's office. He was also a part-time fire inspector at the time, so he was promoted from inspector to fire marshal. It's working out very well, we're very pleased with Paul and. Giving him all the help he can get. We maintain operations under pandemic conditions, which was very trying. We had to close our building to the public, we normally a very open facility where you have the public walking in every day. We keep the doors closed for the most part and locked, which is unusual for us, we're not used to doing that. Operation COVID Shield, if you might remember, last spring, Grace Farms. Made a tremendous huge purchase of protective equipment for the region, basically Fairfield County. And the volunteer fire company was instrumental in distributing the PPE. Really, region-wide hospitals, emergency services and it was great, it was a volunteer effort, they were out there a couple of times a week. Moving truckloads of equipment to hospitals and fire departments and police departments and emergency medical service offices, so it was. A Herculean effort and we can't say enough about the time spent by the volunteers doing all that work. And we were able to maintain a stable volunteer roster, which was good because our recruitment and retention. Programs had to be temporarily suspended due to COVID. We tried to keep as many people isolated as we can and it's kind of hard to do in a, in a group setting. Our goals for twenty twenty-two are to fill the vacant fire inspector, part-time fire inspectors. Paul Payne was a part-time fire inspector and as he transitioned to fire marshal, we have an opening there which we haven't filled yet. We would like to add a career assistant chief, the funding is in the budget this year, we've been discussing that for years and the funding is there. If approved, this position would be filled in January of twenty twenty-two, so we would do it in the second half of the fiscal year. We would like to enhance our water supply system, which is basically the dry hydrant system. We plan on installing two brand-new dry hydrants in the next twelve months, which will aid water supply in the northwest section of town where. There's a deficit, we just don't have municipal hydrants, as you're aware, we did have a couple of bad fires up in that part of town last year. And we've been efforting auxiliary water supply up there ever since. We want to improve our recruitment and retention programs, maintain our current level of service and enhance our regional partnerships. Working with our neighboring departments is very important, it helps reduce costs for our taxpayers. By sharing assets of other departments and we share ours with them and they share theirs with us. Particularly when it comes to manpower, when we have a significant fire, we request help from the neighbors and they come help and it's great at no cost to us. Our performance measures are to maintain low property loss and civilian injury rates from fire. Twenty, the past year has been very good, we were very lucky, the year before that was kind of bad, but this year we've been doing pretty well. Maybe it's because everybody's home all the time, I'm not really sure what the reason is, but we've had a pretty good year. We would like to increase our volunteer roster and we want to continue updating our pre-planned integrated data file sharing capabilities. Just jump into the operating budget. Total revenue, we generally don't really have any revenue, it would only be from fines and permits and there are very, very few of those issued every year. There are fines for repeated false alarms, but the fire marshal's office is very proactive. If we have somebody that might become a frequent malfunction, the fire marshal's office helps them get their system repaired. And that definitely decreases the amount of time we spend answering malfunction alarm systems. Our total budget operating request is three million nine hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars. And it's an additional services budget because we're going to add a full-time employee for half the year. So that's where the major increase is, ninety-seven percent of our budget is non-discretionary, which means it's been covered by a contract of some sort. A service contract, a labor contract and agreement. A local agreement or whatever and only three percent of our budget is discretionary, which is basically training and maintenance. It's a three-point, three-point-six percent increase or ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars over last year's budget. Four point two percent of that is non-discretionary and we also made eleven point two percent reduction in discretionary spending. We looked very carefully at the things that we control and we made it eleven percent reduction in order to keep our numbers low as we could. Just to break down our budget, these two pie graphs show that ninety-one percent of our budget goes for personnel expenses. And the lower right pie chart shows that ninety-six point eight percent of our budget is non-discretionary. The little red sliver is the amount of money that we can normally control, the other things are pretty much either. Or contractual, they're non-discretionary. Line item increases, we had a hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars in increases. And we made forty-four thousand three hundred dollars in reductions and that's where we get the ninety-four one fifteen or the three point uh six percent. These are the budget drivers, um, full-time salaries went up twenty-three thousand. That's basically for the new assistant chief position for half the year, the part-time and um, the, there was an offset, our administrative assistant. Payroll line went from full-time to the part-time line, so there's a large increase in the part-time line because we moved. Uh, Jill Stamen's salary from full-time salaries to part-time salaries. Sellers overtime is is um. We did three-year averaging to see where, you know, how much money we have spent and. The uh, that's the three-year averages, the seventeen thousand dollar increase in that line. Vacations is is minimal, it's only twelve hundred dollars. Overtime sick and injury, we did three-year averaging on both of those lines and these were the numbers we came up with for actual spending. Promotional testing went up because we have a vendor right now administering a test for a promotion for uh a new lieutenant. And the cost of that testing was uh three, is three thousand four hundred dollars more than we had in the budget. Uh, four oh one contribution is is a number that's given to us by uh HR. Educational incentive is money that we give uh career personnel or uh. Service uh certifications they earn to improve their skill level. And there's a stipend paid annually for um. Training they get on their own time, they would go on their own time and get a certification and we will, we would reward them for it by giving them an annual stipend. And the rest are utilities, basic electricity, fuel, gasoline, water. And uh dues and subscriptions, that's just an inflationary number. Uh, reductions, we did the same three-year calculation, we reduced overtime callback by five hundred dollars. We also reduced the salaries trained by nine thousand five hundred dollars. Social Security was reduced by twelve thousand dollars because our uh full-time employee went to part-time. Uh, employee fitness, these are all um minor adjustments. Mobile uh equipment repairs went by, but went down by nine thousand, that's basically because we have a newer fleet. Um, and there have been less uh long-term or major repairs on the fleet, um. We could have a motor problem or a transmission problem that could, you know, destroy that line item, but uh. We've been pretty lucky and our maintenance program is pretty good, so that's where we got the forty-four thousand dollars in savings. Um, fees and fines are our only income. False alarms, as everybody knows, most people in this meeting probably have alarms on their homes. Uh, your first false alarm is free, your second false alarm is a hundred dollars and everyone after that is a hundred dollars, generally the fire marshal's office will help you. Contact your insurance or your uh alarm company and get your alarm fixed, so we issue very few alarms. Blasting permits uh are sixty bucks apiece, we generally average about one a year. Uh, there isn't a lot of blasting in town because there's not that much new construction in um that requires it. Both of these uh lines, the fire alarm fines and blasting permits are um. The schedule is set by the state of Connecticut and New Canaan's uh fees are at the maximum allowed by state statute. Plan reviews and consultations, um, this expense is figured in with the building department. It's part of the permit and uh plan review process and any uh fees for that are all wrapped into the one. Fee, so with, there's really no fee that the the fire department charges for. Fire marshal inspections and fire marshal plan reviews and consultations. And this is um our budget line by line. It's kind of hard to read and I'm sure you all have a better copy of it on your tables, if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to. Analyze any line or explain any line changes that you have. And um that was operating, if anybody has any questions, I'm ready to move on to capital. During none, we'll move on to capital. Um, we've actually made reductions from our five-year plan, we reevaluated our needs. And we reduced a couple of our line items, the first one is for SCBA air bottle replacement. Um, we reduced it by six thousand dollars after doing an inventory and looking at our equipment, we realized that we didn't need as many as we thought, so we reduced that. Uh, by six thousand dollars, personal protective equipment, which is basically the boots, coats and helmets that the firefighters wear. They all have a lifespan, they must be, they must be retired after ten years from the data manufacturer. And um, we keep a close inventory of what we have and we know how many sets of gear we have to replace. Radio replacements for two thousand dollars, um, the town bought a brand-new radio system a couple of years ago. And uh, one item that was not included in that system is pagers and this two thousand dollars is for replacement pagers. Uh, they get, they have a certain light expectancy, they're carried around on people's belts all the time. They get dropped, they get broken, sometimes they're, it's more. Cost efficient to replace it than repair it, so that's for uh replacement pagers. Fire station alerting system is um. An intercom alert system that's in the firehouse that lets the guys that are on duty know when there's a call. The system we have now is quite old, I actually have two systems because we cannibalize. One system to repair the other system, the parts are uh unavailable. And with the new uh regional dispatch service that we're a a member of. They're updating the alarm systems in all the firehouses for all the partners and this is the equipment that we need in New Canaan. The infrastructure would all be part of the uh, the regional dispatch system, which we're not going to be paying for, but we're just paying for. Uh, modifications to the firehouse and that's what this cost is. Fire hose replacement, we reduced this by fifty percent, we've been very lucky with the amount of fire hose we have lost in the past year. Uh, being that it's been very quiet and when we test the hose, it's all passed its test. Uh, tools and equipment, that's for replacement of tools that we have currently that uh reach end of life or are unrepairable. And we also have the new rescue truck coming in, so there might be a couple of items that we would buy out of this line to put on the new rescue truck and put in service. And water supply and improvement, we reduced this line by three thousand dollars this year because we have a carryover balance. From previous years from uh projects that we were not able to complete. And uh, we ran into problems with uh getting uh permission to install them or um not having. Enough sites to uh, to install, so um, we had some leftover money, but as I said, we have planned installing two in the next twelve months, so we're really proceeding. Pretty good with that. And that's my uh capital budget request. And in out-year capitals, it's just SCBA bottles, it's a recurring expense, they all have a life expectancy, PPE has a life expectancy and they have to be replaced. Radio replacement as they become unrepairable or obsolete uh technology. Fire hose, it's all basically groceries, uh, the big uh replacement uh would be another pumper. In the next fiscal year, we would ask for it to replace engine two, which is uh, we've extended its life by about five years. Over recommendation because we've done some good maintenance on it and it's less critical truck than the other ones that we replaced on time. And that's our budget presentation, if anybody has any questions.
What are they doing on the uh new rescue?
It's under construction up at Gallows Night in uh Watertown and uh we have lots of pictures, it's like um, we go up there a lot. Being that it's uh close by to inspect it, they're doing a nice job on it and uh we're very pleased with what we've seen so far.
Uh, chief, could you, could you address the 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 fire of an assistant uh assistant fire chief? What it costs on an annual basis to add that head count and what the uh, what the benefit is?
The benefit is that um, our current assistant chief is a volunteer and he um, only has so many hours in the day or the week or the month. To contribute to the fire department. Uh, I am the only staff officer. That uh, we have right now, everybody else works rotating shifts and is uh, works one day and is off three days. Um, I'm there, I'm on call twenty-four seven, I have been for many years and um, some of our. Training and OSHA compliance and all the other paperwork is uh. Can be overwhelming sometimes and it would be nice to have a deputy, all the other departments in our region with career personnel have always had. At least one, if not more, um assistants or deputy chiefs to assist with the uh day-to-day operation of the department. And our new assistant chief would be instrumental in uh maintaining our training program for career and volunteer personnel. Be our OSHA compliance officer, our health and safety officer and um. Billing for the chief when he wants to take a day off or a week off, if I go on vacation, I'm on leave right now, if you can't tell, I'm not in my office. And um, there's uh. The volunteer fire uh assistant chief is there right now and, you know, he had, he's got the other. Commitments that he has to take care of between his full-time career and other commitments he has.
And the, and the total annual cost, cost for that?
The annual cost, I believe, is about a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, but I'd have to get that number from HR, I'm not really sure. It's a a salary schedule item, it's comparable to what the fire marshal makes, I believe it's the same pay grade as the fire marshal.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, back to the same subject, what, what's the thinking about a six-month uh salary split? We, so you just figure you're going to hire them halfway through the year?
Yes, um, it's going to take a while to do uh, to vet a new candidate for the position and um, the board of selectmen. Uh, felt that it was more affordable to fund the position for six months. This year and then it would be um, full-time in the future budget years and that was a decision made at the board of selectmen.
Okay, thanks, and one more follow-up, if, so if there's a working fire and you're, say you're home. You have to drive in from where you are, would this person be able to take over for, for your responsibility or how would that work?
Um, yes, they would be second in command, we, sometimes we both show up, um, there are many calls when a significant incident happens that. Myself and the assistant chief are both there, sometimes I'm only there, sometimes he's only there. Um, I live in Stanford and I'm only about twelve minutes from the firehouse and the assistant chief lives in town right now. And uh, when the fire commission uh makes a hiring, they would, I'm sure that uh residency or distance from. Town would be a deciding factor on who would be the most successful candidate.
Now make sure you mention that we've got some good perks now.
Yeah, yes, we do.
Chief, just a, a quick question, um, not, not about the budget, but um. Is there anything the town could be doing to help with recruitment, is there anything more we could be doing?
The town has stepped up significantly in the past year and offered a tax abatement for very active volunteers. Which was, is a tremendous uh help and um, it's happened in many other towns and it finally happened in New Canaan. And it will be an incentive to retain long-term good members and will also help us recruit new people that live in town. Or even in the neighboring towns because there's uh language, I believe, in the ordinance that allows the town to uh assist out-of-towners with their uh. Their personal taxes or their property taxes in neighboring towns.
I, I do remember that uh coming through subcommittee, uh, and. And I, and I was happy that that got done, but is there anything else, you know, I know that's putting you on the spot, but. This is the best opportunity.
It, it's a great opportunity to ask and and thank you very much for asking, but the town has been very good to the fire department. Um, you, you funded most of our capital requests when we need them, we understand that there are other needs in the town, it's at certain times. Um, every fire chief in the country would probably say we would like more manpower, so I will say we would like more manpower. And uh, I can see the snide looks on some faces right now, but um, that's kind of where we are, it's a combination department. And we prepare for the average day, but when the big one happens and they do happen occasionally, you can never have too many firemen. And uh, we'd love to have more people, but um, we know what reality is.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome, any other questions?
John, we should recognize the uh fire commissioner there on the uh call as well. I saw Jack before and.
I see Jack Horner, you want to say something, Jack?
Uh, no, thank you very much for your, for your continued support, uh, chief, you did a great job, thank you very much and uh. Mark, thanks for asking that question about anything else uh you can do to help us. Uh, you all have done a great job in helping us with uh recruitment and retention, especially on the volunteer side. And it is greatly appreciated, not only by management in the department, but by, more importantly, by the members. It, it's truly recognized uh, how well the town thinks of the fire department, so thank you.
Thank you, Jack, thank you, Jack.
I would turn off my share screen if I knew how.
I can do that.
That would be great.
Okay, here we are. All right, thank you both, Jack and Jack, and uh, we'll move on to the next. Which is a discussion of a, and vote on a proposed resolution in support of the home rule. In municipal zoning decision-making. Does anybody want me to read this or does anybody not want me to read this?
It's pretty long, John, I mean, we've all read it, so I think we're, I think we're familiar with it. Unless there's anybody that wants to read it, does anybody in the council want to read it?
All right, so I'll just um, say that um, I'd like to call your attention to item number six. There is a proposed resolution in support of home rule and municipal zoning decision-making. The purpose of this is to communicate to the legislators uh and general assembly. Uh, that we believe. That our planning and zoning and our zoning board of appeals are the best way to manage zoning decisions. In this community and we hope that when they, and you'll, and I'll read the last paragraph. Be it resolved that the town council of New Canaan, Connecticut opposes any state mandated one-size-fits-all zoning legislation. And the ability of any outside housing authority to have jurisdiction of our town's affordable housing plan. And any similar legislation that would further overrule, remove or diminish local control and decision-making. Related to planning and zoning or affordable housing from the town of New Canaan, Connecticut. Uh, and then it goes on to say who this will be sent to, uh, I think that this was just in, I, I sent this around to all of you, I asked for feedback. The only feedback I got was overwhelmingly in support of the resolution and uh, so. Uh, with a positive vote, we'll send this to Hartford and indicate our support of our planning and zoning. Uh, and their process. Uh, are there, is there a motion? Steve Carl, did I see a second from Christina?
Okay.
Okay, um, any discussion on the resolution?
Just a quick point, I think in the ninth whereas, we need to put the name New Canaan in there instead of generic town slash city.
Ninth whereas, okay, let's find that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, I thought we had gotten the right one, but uh, we will do that, yes.
I think it's great. Easily, our best, easily our best English major, Tom Butterworth, by far.
Okay, so uh, we have a motion and a second, we've gotten discussion, all in favor, raise your hand, Penny? Oh, raise your hand? Okay, now Penny, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I don't see Liz, Liz, you in, in favor or not, yep, okay, there we go, eleven, so uh, the motion passes eleven to nothing. And um, it's passed, so we have uh, we have made a resolution that we'll send to Hartford, thank you all. Next, we have a proposed ordinance, we did, we conducted a public hearing before this meeting. On the discussion and vote on the proposed tax abatement of real and personal property taxes. Steve Carl, do you want to host a, a vote?
Yeah, so it just to review, we, at, at the earlier meeting at six thirty, we had a public hearing which is required by charter. To hear uh, any, any discussion from the public. Uh, we sort of jumped the gun and took a vote at that meeting, we're actually supposed to um. Vote during this meeting, which is our regular meeting, so uh, this is to make it official. Uh, if anybody wants to review the video from earlier, you, you can review it, it's a very simple. Um, ordinance, not a lot of debate, was fully supported by everyone, so. Um, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the proposed ordinance as discussed. All right, I see Mike Morrow and John Engel. Mike, and uh, any discussion, any, anybody want to add anything?
Do we need to read it fully in, since this is the real vote?
No.
No, I don't think so, I mean, we've, we've been on record a few times. Thanks, Ben. Uh, so I think, you know, we'll be ready to take a vote, so all in favor of the ordinance as discussed, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, good, eleven. Eleven though, passes unanimously, thank you very much, thanks for all the work again. And uh, it's a, it's a great move for uh New Canaan, so, well done.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Next, first selectman's update, Kevin Moynihan, are you out there, Kevin?
Can I, can I say something? You guys keep saying eleven, but I count all twelve members of town council present.
Is, somebody might not be on the screen, is there somebody missing on the screen?
No, no, I think when we took, when we took uh, uh, roll, it was eleven, but we're, we're. No, no, I think when we took, when we took, uh, uh, roll, it was 11, but we're, we're 12.
Yeah, we're 12. We're 12.
We need Tucker to, Tucker to correct us. I don't know where she is.
You're trying to figure it out.
There you go. Thank you, Tucker. So it's 12, nothing on, on the votes.
Okay, excellent. First selectman, Kevin Moynihan. The floor is yours.
Good evening, town council. Good to be with you by Zoom. I'm actually, uh, doing a working vacation from Naples, Florida, so it's nice to be, uh, nice to be here. I, as you, as I said on the call last night, call last night, our, our COVID numbers are good um, and continue to be below the state, uh, averages. As, you know, the vaccination schedule is ramped up because fortunately the state department of public health gave us a big boost in doses. Um, we're the only, um, non-hospital, uh, local public health department that has Pfizer. And, um, so we're gonna finish up the, the, uh, educators this week and next week and, uh, include the 55-plus, uh, in New Canaan who wanna, uh, come to New Canaan, um, you have to be a New Canaan resident. And then beginning Friday, 45 to 54 opens up and we put out a, uh, sign-up, uh, form that you can sign up to get vaccinated in New Canaan. Uh, Stanford Hospital has really ramped up with the new, uh, mass, uh, vaccination center in South Norwalk, I'm sorry, South Stanford. Um, so that, uh, people who, um, call or go online for Stanford Hospital can probably find appointments. And then the governor indicated that beginning April 5th, the, um, under 45 can begin to, uh, sign up for vaccinations, so there's lots of supply of doses coming into Connecticut, so I think we're well on our way to having, uh, vaccine appointments being available for anyone who wants to get vaccinated um, the next couple of months. Uh, testing continues at Lapland Center, courtesy of Wave Any Care Center and the Board of Education is doing testing uh, as well. Uh, we're doing Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday and they're doing Monday, Wednesday and Friday, I believe. And, um, so that's COVID and, uh, uh, we, as you know, reported last month, we've, the town, the police department building committee has been set up. Um, we, uh, added Mike Morrow to the, uh, to the committee. Um, and we've bifurcated that into two processes. One with one architect, Brian Humes, uh, focusing on the South Avenue building, what can be done by either renovation or building, new building there. And the staff, town staff is focusing on, with the other architect, um, if we, uh, determine to try to build a new building somewhere where our location would work preferably on town-owned property. So that's going forward. The, um, selectmen's advisory committee on building is infrastructure met last week or the week before last. No, last Monday. And focus on, focus on boilers, the month before we focus on roofs. And, um, so that process is, is uh, I think working for us to give more eyes on, on capital projects, uh, before they come to, uh, both the board of finance and the town council for bonding. The, uh, CHP project with our true plant is about finished, subject to the, uh, gas line being hooked up in the street, um, and, uh, uh, the Saks, Saks project is moving forward for CHP. And, um, let's see what else. The ever-source gas expansion this summer is, we're actively trying to get ever-source to do more streets than what they're currently planning downtown. They are bringing gas up from, uh, East Avenue, up Main Street, down Locust to hook up that new housing project at the corner of, uh, I think it's 42 Forest, but we're trying to get them to do Elm West, uh, top of Elm, Pine Street, Grove Street and a couple of other streets. So, again, that's, um, we're actively working on that. I, I think I mentioned last month, the, uh, the new pu- public safety cell tower at, uh, Bonus Ridge is moving forward to bring some, because the siding council, AT&amp;T has signed on and, um, so I think that's about all I have. Be happy to answer questions.
I don't think we should ask him any questions because he's on vacation. This is unprecedented.
Well, actually, everybody's doing Zoom, so, uh.
Yeah, but you're supposed to have some time off. That's the idea.
Thank you. John, you're on mute. John?
I think he's frozen.
He's struggling. You can unmute. Uh, anyway.
Mess. Get back to your vacation, Kevin.
Thank you, Steve.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Apparently John needs a new battery in his mouse.
That, that's what it was. All right, I got, I got, I'm, I'm back. So, uh, I was just saying, if you were the fire chief, you wouldn't be able, allowed to leave. Um, all right, next on our agenda, I guess, is, uh, the committee reports. Um, do we have committee reports? Okay, let's begin with, uh, bylaws and ordinances, Mark. I think we got, uh, we got through one of them tonight.
Yeah, we got through one on tonight. We don't have anything to add tonight, so we'll keep it rolling.
You have anything on deck?
Uh, no, there's nothing on deck at this point. I was approached by, um, Allison Hahn about a, um, possibility of, of a dog, um, something to do with a service dog ordinance that she'd like to look at, so that may be on the horizon.
Okay. Education, Tom and Maria.
Uh, Tom and I will probably convene, uh, subcommittee meeting, um, just to let everyone know. Just to kind of dig in a little bit on some of the recent, um, questions that came up about the board of finance and their cut, or not, uh, whatever we're gonna call it. You know, I, I think there are other issues, if anyone else has issues that they wanna, you know, raise or bring, you know, I know late start time, we haven't had a chance to discuss that. Um, COVID expenses. But, uh, we'll get something out as soon as we.
And we're hoping to do that jointly with the finance committee.
Okay. I would like to point out one thing that you mentioned, um, school start times. I would like to acknowledge, uh, in a public way the tremendous number of letters that, uh, all of the town council are getting uh, from interested citizens and I, I do want to express that, uh, we read all those letters. Uh, for a little while, I was trying to thank each person who wrote to us, but, um, uh, I, I was overwhelmed by the amount of, uh, the amount of letters that we were getting. Um, I think it's very important, I, and I just wanted to express that you're not wasting your time. It's very important that we hear from the citizens. Uh, I did talk to Todd Laviere at one point and he said, uh, you know, that he had heard from only a couple dozen, uh, people in the board of finance process and I thought that was unusual because we're hearing from a great deal more than that. I would estimate that we've heard from at least a hundred citizens on both sides of the issue at this point and, uh, and it does matter, so thank you for your letters. Um, next we'll move on to financing government. Mark and Rich.
Mark, you wanna go ahead? Uh, well, I think, you know, Tom and, and Maria, uh, hit on the issue that I think needs to be addressed and, um, I think a, a joint meeting will hopefully answer a lot of questions. I think, um, I, I'm sort of confused by, uh, the process that's gone on. I, I will say that my impression after two years is there seems to be a lot of, or a lack of trust between the board of ed and the town and vice versa. And I think, uh, I, I certainly need clarity on, on this issue. Uh, I, I, I am in an uncomfortable position in terms of, um, our deadline of voting on, on these matters come March 31st, so I hope everyone is, um, eager to understand these issues more. I, I do think they're complex matters, uh, and given everything we've gone through this year, uh, uh, especially how they're related to healthcare costs, I think, you know, everyone should be uh, eager to, to learn as I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Health and Human Services. Liz and Penny?
Uh, yeah, I'll just jump in. Um, basically, uh, our absolutely amazing Department of Health and, uh, Health and Human Services have been knocking it out of the park with getting vaccinations done. Um, it was a little bumpy apparently when the age limit dropped from 55 to 64 because they sent out a sign-up sheet for people to sign up in that age group and then it turned out that they were gonna have to do the teachers first. And that made the teachers very happy and it made some of our citizens very not happy. But the good news is that all, and I'm in that cohort myself, um, and that all kind of ironed itself out within a day or two of, of the age um, band opening up, so, um, and, and Jen, uh, our director was, was very gratified by the teacher's response. And she said in general that our, we don't seem to have much vaccine hesitancy in town. People are are clamoring, uh, and lining up to, to get vaccinated, which is great. Uh, food pantry, uh, utilization is still high. Um, one quick thing to mention about, um, interacting, you know, we had, we heard from our esteemed police department this evening and, um, it was mentioned that Health and Human Services continues to work closely with them. They have a, a subcommittee called COAST, which is Community Outreach and Stabilization, and these are, this is, this is when the police end up working with individuals with, you know, the psychotic episodes or people who are really in trouble emotionally and, um, you know, they've got a really good track record of reaching out to Health and Human Services to follow up to try and get the appropriate services to people. And I think there has been an increase in need for this, you know, with COVID and I think it just shows that, um, you know, our, our police are working to do the right thing to, you know, make sure people who are troubled are getting the right kind of help and are, are treated appropriately. And, um, oh, and the final thing I would just mention is that, um, the director of the Health Department is very happy that she now has her own budget. Because I think in years past, and Penny, I know you would know this, I think she was bundled in, was she bundled in with Health and Human Services? Do you remember where she, where, or maybe she was the general government. Anyway, the Health Department now has their own budget and they're very happy. So, that's what I've got.
I think the only thing I would add is I was checking off my list of the notes, uh, that agreed with what you were speaking about is as at least, uh, two weeks ago, and I'm sure it is a greater number now, uh, 92% of the 75-plus age group, uh, had been vaccinated. Uh, I mean, I think it is an extraordinary effort, uh, as they have, um, touch base with every single one uh, in that age group and gotten them attended to, so, um, it's a very, very, um, hands-on, uh, active, uh, active department.
Thank you, Penny. Um, so I guess next we have Christina and Penny on infrastructure and utilities.
Well, I'll add just a couple other things, uh, from, uh, the Building and Infrastructure Committee that, um, Kevin was reporting on. Uh, these are just some of the very, uh, smaller projects, um, uh, or topics. Um, there are some, uh, going to be a committee forum to study, uh, how we address the, uh, growing uh, need for electric powering, uh, stations as electric car usage, uh, expands. Um, we unfortunately did not get the grant, um, for the bicycle lane that was going to go down Mansfield. And, um, there's been some interest, uh, expressed on movie theater and I think Kevin will be making those announcements or that announcement coming up sometime in the next month or so. And the phase three, which had been moved to phase one, uh, of Wavany House, the ADA A compliance, um, the entrance and exits, uh, to the building is, uh, well underway. Uh, so, um, you know, there's progress there. Christina, you have anything else?
No.
Okay, um, then I'm moving on to land use and recreation. Robin and Maria.
Um, not much to report. We still need to meet, but, um, just from the recreation side, pickle courts are going in at Mead Park. They'll be up this, I believe, this summer. Uh, Kiwanis is going back to the half-side, uh, Y-half, back to residents, um, with a lease agreement this year, $10,000. Um, there was an update in the Wavany Disc Golf Course, some improvements there and, uh, the playground, as Tiger had said previously at the BOF meeting, has, uh, the proposed playground is being deferred for another year. And also that the paddle courts brought in 74,000 so far this year. So, big increase.
Why is the playground being deferred a year?
Uh, Tiger, I think because of the budget. I, I believe it was gonna be $574,000 for the playground next to the sports equipment. So, I believe Tiger didn't think it'd be able to go through, so he's deferring it a year.
Okay. So he got the money in the budget, but he just doesn't have the time to do it, implement it?
John, we don't, John, we don't have the money in the budgets and proposed in this year's budget. It was, we removed it so that we could then take a better look at it. Go to the parking wreck, place the, the, the playground in a suitable facility or a suitable location of waving, since there were some concerns as to where its present location or its proposed location, I should say. So we're just deferring it the year. We're just pushing it out a year. We'll come back for the request. Hasn't been approved yet.
Okay, okay. Public Safety, Liz and Mike.
Uh, I think we got the reports from the chiefs today, so I don't think there's anything to add.
Okay.
Pretty easy. I brought my guys today.
So, uh, so that's it for committee reports. So I guess in closing, I'll just say that I'll see all of you in 48 hours. We have, our next meeting is on the 18th and I believe that we're gonna talk to, is it Health, Recreation?
Yeah, Health, Human Services, um, Public Works, Capital Infrastructure, Buildings and Recreation.
Okay. Got it. All right, so, um, we'll start at 7 o'clock on Thursday and I'll see you all there. Do you, uh, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Penny, seconded by Steve Carl, always. Okay, motion to adjourn. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.